To be watched closely. I appreciate your time. Once again, thank you all very much. I'll have a good night.
Thank you. Casey McGregor. Please introduce yourself. You have four minutes.
Hello, Mayor and Council Casey McGregor. Tonight's packet G six should be pulled and sent to a study session. It should not continue in this packet. My point in saying this right now is you can pull it from the agenda before it's adopted.
All right, can we move on to a different topic? Thank you.
No. F sixteen, I'm finding it very odd, and maybe somebody can go into more elaboration with what's going on with the Chateau Theater. Why last council meeting is their bathrooms proposed this council meeting? It's ventilation, heating and air conditioning. Why is this not coming out as one large project? Can somebody elaborate more on why this is being chopped up coming through council? Now, my main thing I'm going to speak about tonight is HF one. If we're if we were talking about a sports complex that was being built by a private entity, I would have no problems with this. However, I am against the city building this. Number one, what are the protective profit margins margins on a project like this? Number two, with this expand government, would we have to hire more staff after the sports client complex was built, costing taxpayers more money? How do you? Number three, how do you justify spending the increased tax collected on a sports facility that only benefits a fraction of your community? I say this with two things in mind. Not everybody in your community has children, and my second thought, it does not help sometimes poor children, as I know some of you are going to be like, oh, we have these great programs. But what you don't know is that I was that poor child, and I wanted to play traveling softball so bad. I took my $25 and signed myself up. Do you know how many games I went to? Zero. Apparently, you still need your family to participate in getting you there. Where your parents can't drive in and out and miss work, it doesn't matter if there's programs, you still just don't get to participate. So we need to be honest about that. Sports facilities are not for everyone. Number four, Rochester aftermath of COVID is still a big deal. I always thought with Mayo Clinic being 24 hours a day, Rochester B should be a 24 hour city. It should be easy. Do you know how many restaurants serve food past nine PM are left in Rochester? Do you know how many restaurants serve food past 10 PM? Have? Do you have any nightlife in the city left? How do you have a sports facility with no nightlife? Number five, after watching the new released movie Sound of Freedom, I highly recommend everyone in this room seeing it. It's life changing. The child sex trafficking trade in the United States is absolutely horrifying and disgusting. So we need to be honest about that, too. Rochester is an international city with an international airport. How would this city design or increase task force design for trafficking in the city? Congress just spoke about the 85,000 children that are missing and lost in America. What is Rochester's plan? Let's use tax dollars to fund a task force and make us one of the hardest cities to traffic in humans. Number six, last packet, June 26, J one took 24.8 acres northwest from R one zoning to R three zoning. Today's packet K one also 74 acres northwest puts R two zoning and R three. So just these two things in Northwest, Northwest is growing fast. So I am wondering where we are in the fire chief's plan on the eight step plan that he pitched to council in session on April 10. Because Northwest needs a fire station, and I've heard call volume up is up again this year. When does Northwest get their beautiful, brand new fire station like Northeast? If you're going to keep developing Northwest at this rate, the city council is going to have to give us a fire station. At what step are you on on the eight step plan? Is this should be? This should be number one priority with the extra tax dollars. At the end of the day, your job is safety, not entertainment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perfect timing. All right. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who would like to speak? All right, we will close the open comment period and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geesler, will you please call the roll?
Apologies. Councilmember Keen here. Councilmember Ransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Yeah.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right, thank you so much. All right, for the administrative zones, would you go ahead with your report, please?
Thank you, Council President, council members, mayor, members of the public, a very brief report today and respect for the length of the agenda. Just want to thank our teammates as always for their customer service ethic of respect, integrity, safety and excellence in all that they do. Just two things to kind of highlight for the month. July is disability pride month, so recognizes the ADA Act that was passed in July 1990, and obviously something that's important to the city of Rochester. I did mention earlier today that we are welcoming a graduate fellow, and his work will be focused on equitable accessible government. And the place that he's starting with his work plan is with transit, so additional hands on deck there to be able to assist us as we continue to improve in that space, starting with that. So really, I'm glad to have Jacob with us and recognize disability pride month, and then also just wanted to give a shout out to our friends at Rochester Public Utilities. They're partnering with Spark, and there is a rain barrel that's located in the exterior area of Spark up at Apache Mall. So that is a partnership to both learn and educate about the ability to recycle rainwater and the opportunities that we have here in Rochester. So thank you to them for working with youth in the community. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mayor Norton.
I'll have a short one this evening, too. Safe City Nights is on tomorrow, July 11th from 6 to 8 PM at Jefferson Elementary School. So for the communities knowledge, we do move these, the police department, law enforcement and others do move these around the community. So different neighborhoods have a chance to participate. So this is the one in northeast Rochester. There'll be free food, activities, booze, lots of opportunities for young people and old alike to learn about law enforcement in our community. So I'd encourage folks to attend that. Also, I will be attending the National League of Cities Summer Board Leadership Meeting. I'll be gone just for two days to Tacoma. As I chair the university community council, and I serve on human development committee and women and municipal government. So we'll be having our meetings. It's a quick up and back and and that'll be, as I said, July 19th and 20th, and then on the 20th, I'm taking the red eye to Atlanta to present for the National Conference on Health Communication and Marketing and Media, and that's being paid for by the move with the mayor group. And so we've been able to save a little bit of money all in all on the whole trip because of that opportunity. But I'll be speaking about the vaccine initiative to encourage folks to use, take all kinds of vaccinations for public health. So we'll be speaking about that at the conference. And lastly, again, a reminder about boards and commission vacancies. We still have Ward six music board. And if there's someone from Ward four, we have someone representing Ward four right now. But at some point, we will be looking to fill that position. So if anyone is interested in either music or the parks, they should go on the city's website and apply for one of those positions. Or I guess I should just generally remind people, we have many boards and commissions, and while these are the only two current openings, we have them most months throughout the year, and we would love to have you submit your name to be part of the city decision making, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So we're going to move on to the order of the agenda. So a couple of quick things. Colleagues, listen to this because there is a last minute change. So in addition to the typo and F 12, which we're all aware of, the clerk has recommended change or is would like to change item G eight, the proposed ordinance for adult use cannabis and eliminate from consideration in the requested action. Number one, the clause relating to per capita number of businesses limitation and only consider the following approving a proposed ordinance prohibiting the operation of any new cannabis businesses within the city before January 1st, 2025. So Clerk Geesler will provide some more detail when we get to that item, but just want to make sure you're aware of that change. And if there's a motion, we can certainly ask questions during discussion on this item.
Just clarification, the the discussion on G eight did not sound like a change in the agenda. It's still the same agenda item.
The proposed action has changed.
Okay.
Striking number one.
Okay.
So it's a two part. Go ahead, Clerk Geesler.
Council President, just to clarify, there's two clauses in the first action, and we're striking one of the clauses.
Okay.
Which is the per capita limitation, not forever, just not for tonight. I think that's a discussion for a different day and goes against the intent of what the item was brought forward for this evening. So.
Okay. Again, I think it's a good update that we know early on. I'm just trying to, I don't think it's a change in the agenda. I don't know.
So we just, we decided that it was better to get it on your radar right now until waiting.
I appreciate that, but I'd move to approve the order of the agenda, recognizing the change in F eight and our our knowledge of the other changes to come when we go through the actions.
Point of clarification, G eight.
And G eight, yes.
Second, Councilmember Wall. All right, any discussion? Councilmember Keen, any other clarification? Any others?
Just to clarify, we're striking one, but the rest of the.
So only.
Yep. I just, I need to see it, hearing that. I just want to see it, though.
And we'll get there when we, I think we'll do that when we get there.
Got it. Thank you.
Clerk Geesler, would you please send by email the language you shared with me? All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. So far, Councilmember Dennis has pulled items F fourteen and F sixteen. I will just ask her to confirm that as if your questions can be. If you can either state your concern during the discussion on the consent agenda or vote nay if you have a challenge instead of asking staff to wait till the very end if it's a small concern.
Well, I think, like I mentioned before, efficient government is not good government. I think we need to be thorough and and over $6 million for the airports.
Okay, Councilmember Dennis, are you pulling the items?
What I'm saying is why I pulled them is because I.
You don't need to tell us why you pulled them. Just tell us if you're still pulling them.
Well, well, I was going to send one, but I will. But I will not rescind what I was going to resent.
Okay, thank you. So I've been notified that F fourteen and F sixteen are pulled. So I'd asked council to consider to approve, make a motion to approve and block. I have F one through thirteen, F fifteen, F seventeen through twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Councilmember Dennis, if you had a comment, this would be the time briefly, and then we'll get into the discussion later.
I can wait to the.
I, I.
This is not, no, it's not a public comment meeting. We're going to move on to our public hearings, of which we have many. So I always take a moment to go through our public hearing guidelines. And as always, we invite staff to provide an introductory presentation before inviting our applicant or representative of the applicant to speak for up to 10 minutes. We open the public hearing. Members of the public have up to five minutes each to make a comment, same rules or same requests apply. Please do keep your comments concise to make sure that people do have enough time to speak. Again, it's going to be a late night. We have eight public hearings on the agenda. We want to make sure people do have an opportunity to weigh in. And then we close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide up to five minutes of a rebuttal before we invite council colleagues to ask any questions of the applicant or staff. Invite a motion, discussion and vote. So with that, we will start our first public hearing, which is item G one, the reconstruction of 16 and a half Street Northwest from 19th Avenue Northwest to 21st Avenue Northwest, project number J seven eight four eight. And I believe we have Dylan Dombrowski here to introduce the item. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, President, members of the council. Tonight is the assessment hearing for the 16 and a half Street Northwest reconstruction project. Because of state statute, chapter 429, we have an assessment policy that allows us to assess abutting property owners for the project improvements. And as you recall, you updated that assessment policy in 2022. We assess for a portion, 25% of just the qualifying items, which are street items, pavement, the rock beneath the pavement, curb and gutter, and any grading that is associated with that. So tonight is the assessment hearing where the requested action will be to adopt a resolution levying the assessments as presented in the assessment role. I have one change to that assessment role that I would like you to exclude one property. Being that this is our first assessment hearing with the new policy. I made a mistake, and we actually, we used to include corner lots, but if they, if they front on the neighboring side street, which this one lot does, they actually, per the policy, should not be assessed. So the property that I'd like you to, when you get to the the action, would like you to exclude is the property. It's a 1615 19th Avenue Northwest, so it's just around the corner. And it's the property ID is 7427 34.022348. And it actually happens to be that first one on the roll that's in the packet. So as as happens at assessment hearings, people have the opportunity to come and speak about the project. They can, they do have the option to appeal their assessments, which would then go on to district court if they file. We have not heard that anyone is filing an appeal, but tonight would be their opportunity. If they do come forward and speak, we would just ask that they provide us their address and PIN number in writing. So we do know that they formally filed the appeal because they do need to do that tonight in order to then move on to district court. So with that, I will turn it over to you for the public hearing.
All right, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak or provide it in a request for an appeal? Is there anyone joining virtually? Use the raise hand function in Zoom or press star nine. All right, hearing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff, colleagues?
Oh.
Go ahead, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, just just one thing. You went through the process of the policy and how we do, we can do 25% of the qualified things. How, in this case, this is an RPU driven project. We're driven by water, so the streets tore up. So we're taking the opportunity, as I understand it, to redo the street. How do we, do we, does that the whole street or is that the delta that would be left if we weren't redoing the street? Or how do we, how do we divide up that?
Part of, we do have the cost share policy with RPU that, you know, with them driving the project, they do also pay a portion of the street.
Okay.
Reconstruction. So the city picks up 75%, 25% goes to the property owners of that 75% per our cost share between the departments. RPU is also paying for a portion of the street.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, a motion with that consideration of 1615.
Adopt a resolution levying the proposed assessments less the corner lot on, is it 19th and a half?
1615 19th Avenue.
You could, you could refer to the property ID ending in two, two, three, four, eight.
As stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen.
Again, these, I think these make sense. This is the dig one sort of policy that when the streets tore up, we should look at these options of doing this sort of work. I think we just have to make sure we're sharing the cost correctly. And I've gone through this a little bit with public works. I think sometimes we, there's a little more trouble, but I think this one looks good.
Other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
So I think it looks good as well in Ward, in Ward six. So I just wanted to, just for future reference, make sure that all residents are notified in person. I should have asked that question. Maybe I can follow up because sometimes mail's lost and there's electronic barriers. So, but I do think everything looks good on this. So thank you.
Any other, sorry, did you say notified in person?
If people have questions for this number of houses, I think it would be beneficial for staff to take the time just to go knock on the doors and make sure that people's questions are answered. A lot of people say they didn't receive the postcard. There's issues with, you know, they don't do surveys, and so information is lost. So on situations like this, where it's a certain number for houses that are going to be impacted greatly. And so information is lost, so on situations like this where it's a certain number for houses that are gonna be impacted greatly. I would just, uh, like to see that future projects that residents are notified, um, individually, because there's always questions and having that personal touch is important.
I mean, I, obviously, when we're doing projects and there's public engagement, you know, we, we reach out to residents in different ways. The statute requires we mail it to the property owner, so, you know, going door to door doesn't, isn't always effective because some of these could be renters and not actually the property owner that will be assessed on their property tax statement. So what we do is we do send it out by mail per the state statute requirements and, you know, obviously, we have other opportunities to engage with people, but that is what we do per the statute.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, so we will.
Madam President.
Yes.
I would ask that you warn, uh, the, the woman in the front row that she'll be excused from the chambers if she continues to disrupt this meeting.
I, we've had this disagreement before and I appreciate that you are a passionate individual, but we do have, we do have rules of procedure in our chambers, so. All right, I do, I, I'm so sorry, but I am gonna have to ask you to leave. Okay.
Can we, can we take a five-minute break, please?
Sure. They're coming on up.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
And the associated CD twenty twenty three zero zero one annexation by YHD LLC and Hanson Young LLC. The properties are located in the southwest or southwest of the scenic Oaks West Second subdivision, which is west of US Highway fifty two and south of forty eighth Street North or Southwest. The request tonight is to amend the growth management map to redesignate approximately forty seven point four three acres from urban reserve beyond twenty fifty to near term urban expansion and to annex said land in the city limits. This was a development that's part of a larger general development plan that was approved in twenty sixteen by the council at that time. There's adequate city infrastructure that will exist with this proposed phase and for the additional fourth phase that might come up in the future. This will all be at the cost of the developer and the planning commission voted unanimously six to zero to forward the recommendation of approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Muller. The applicant like to speak? You have a busy evening, Mr. Welch. You have ten minutes.
Mark also G cubed engineering represented the applicant developer Mark Hanson who is here if you have questions specific for him. This is part of the GDP for Santa Coops West. The property hadn't been annexed before he made some changes requiring the growth management map amendment. So when it came forward, staff outlined some new concerns with water main and sanitary sewer. We've worked with staff. And I think we have a agreement that allows everything to move forward with development. So at this point, I have nothing else to add.
Okay, we'll get back to you after the public hearing. All right, I don't have anybody signed up, but I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there someone who would like to speak on either G three or G four? Was there anyone joining virtually? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Last call seeing no one will close the public hearing and invite any questions from my colleagues. Or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the growth management map amendment CD twenty twenty three dash zero one G M M A. Second.
Right, Councilmember Palmer?
Nothing.
Any other discussion? All right. So again, this is a super majority required. So five of us all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. I'd invite a second motion related to the annexation.
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation petition number CD twenty twenty three dash zero zero one ANX. Second.
Councilmember Palmer?
Nothing, thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item G five, which is the zoning map amendment number CD twenty twenty three zero zero five Z C by Rochester Civic Lot Development, and I will turn it over to Mr. Yetzer to introduce the item. Go ahead.
It'll be me.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, President and Council members. The property is located at two one seven East Center Street, and the request is to change the zoning district of approximately one point seven nine acres site from our four high density residential to mixed use downtown fringe. This is part of a development. This is the development process of a request for proposal that you had seen in twenty twenty one, which was issued then and was awarded in March of March twenty first and twenty twenty two. Looking at this, the R four district has a maximum height of a hundred and fifteen feet and then it has some required setbacks that would be put on the site. If you change the zoning, that max height is boosted up to one hundred and thirty five feet and there are no required setbacks. So it would assist the future project to move forward. The site is also located to located adjacent to other mixed use districts of the southwest and south. And then the site was unanimously forwarded sixty zero to you guys for approval.
All right, thank you. The applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Come on up. You have ten minutes.
We are also signed in council president.
Oh, sure.
Comments in the public hearing, not sure.
Okay, so you'll speak now. You're the actual applicant, right? Okay.
Said okay.
Yes, so you have ten minutes now, and then we'll open the public hearing and you'll have five minutes if there are questions that come up or if there are council colleagues that have questions. So go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, Mayor, Council President, all council members. My name is Dan Collison, Senior Director of Business Development and Public Affairs for Sherman Associates. It has been a privilege for more than a year to get to know the community, to spend time with Councilmember Kirkpatrick to understand the ward, to engage with the downtown neighborhood association, the lower town neighbor association, the east side neighbor association, even get a minivan tour in the middle of the winter through some of the beautiful neighborhood assets that surround the site that we are bringing forward a proposal to develop. And I also want to say, since being awarded with the project, working with the city staff, working with the staff of Destination Medical Center and as well the public work staff that are installing the geothermal system that's being so beautifully displayed. We hope to be one of the first, if not the first into that system with this project and have great aspirations for this. And in all of this, even researching at the History Center of the Olmsted County and getting to know several dozen nonprofits in town, we feel like the multi-family program that we're proposing not only meets the RFP will be, but will also be one of many projects that Sherman can potentially partner with the city on. And so I just am here to build relationships, ensure that we get it right, to listen to you, to listen to the community, to listen to not only leaders but the residents. And we're very pleased and we are grateful to have the opportunity to do this. And my colleague, senior developer care, senior developer Carol Mehdi is the one who's actually running a lot of the mechanics of the project, and we're so pleased to be here together.
It's nice to meet everyone. Like Dan said, my name's Carol Mehdi, Senior Developer, leading the project. And we're keeping this short and sweet, so we're here to answer any questions. I know what's up on the agenda today is just the rezoning portion of it. We're working with staff on the entitlements, but we're excited about the project. We think it fits very well into the definition of the MXD fringe or downtown fringe zoning definition. So hopefully you support the rezoning of our parcel.
All right, we'll get back to you after the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up for item G five. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Come on up. Introduce yourself and you have five minutes and.
Good evening, councilmembers. Dan Litzinger, I represent the Riverfront Building located to the east side of the river of the project from Sherman Associates. First of all, I'm not against the rezoning at all. The only question I do have is in the four twenty five engagement meeting and the public hearing on six fourteen, there was some discussion or actually in the presentation, there was setbacks and variances for that, and I thought they were just rezoning. So I'm not sure if those just get slid in or how those are discussed. I wasn't aware of any side setbacks or front setbacks, obviously being right next door. The rezoning takes it to a zero side setback. So I'm not sure how the process works, a little concerned about it because it was never discussed in any any conversations or meetings, even meeting with Dan, Dan Collins a couple of times. So that's the only concern I have, not against rezoning, just side setbacks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Anybody else joining us in public would like to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite the team back up to to respond to that question in particular. Thank you.
So our particular plan does, even though the this new zoning would have a zero setback requirement, our our development does have a setback. I can't remember exactly offhand. It's probably at least fifteen feet, especially along the side property boundaries. We want to fit sidewalk and just have space and all of that. I don't think that us or really any future project would probably ever build line to line, but I think it's in the idea of of a downtown realm where if you were to have those buildings be totally, you know, shared wall situations, but that's not how we have designed this nor would we intend to go down that route.
Okay, thank you. And I assume staff is going to say, if Sherman doesn't develop it, another developer could come in and do that, but thank you for clarifying your plans. Questions? Councilmember Keen?
A question for staff. So many times when we do this, we we're doing zoning changes based on a request for a specific project. Obviously, we know that doesn't have to happen. It could something else happen. As part of this recommendation, do you look at the other properties around there? I know there's been some general statement that it's consistent, but would you change the other adjoining properties or similar properties at this point, or we're only looking at this one? One point five acre property.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. We we wouldn't look at the other properties through this process, but this is timed well with the zoning map update that we're currently working on. What I would say though is those surrounding properties have what we call a high density residential land use. So there's more than one zoning district that makes sense within that land use. So it's unlikely that the surrounding properties will result in a change from the zoning map project that we're working on. But otherwise, no, we wouldn't typically bring it forward just along with another request. We would look for either a request from that property owner or some sort of city initiative that suggests we should be changing that zoning designation.
No, that's helpful. I didn't expect you to do the whole area, but I guess what I'm trying to protect from is when this happens, would somebody else say that's a reason enough that you should do it for me then too? Or what is our policy on? We did it down the street. You have to do it for us and then it doesn't make sense? Or what do we do in those situations? Because if somebody else came in now and said, hey, this allows me to build higher, this allows me to do something, I want that change. Do we just go through the same process or is there some like city planning that goes along with it?
Yeah, it's a good question. Unfortunately, I don't think there's a straightforward answer on that. I think it's really a case by case basis. I think quite frankly, in this location, if I was taking your question literally to say down the street from this block, we probably would support another another zone change there because there the this zoning designation makes sense in in this location. Now, we've had in this particular location on the going the other direction towards the neighborhood and now down the street might not make as much sense. And so it really is a case by case basis. What's the land use designation? What's surrounding it? What type of street infrastructure is there, et cetera, et cetera? So I don't think I can give a straightforward answer, but it really depends on what the location we're talking about is.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thanks for your question, Mr. Keen, similar to mine, and thank you so much, Mr. Yetzer, for explaining that. And I appreciate how the MX fringe did not work for the northeast corner of East Center Street and Sixth Avenue Southeast. However, this is, I believe, the perfect zoning choice for this particular location. Yep, so what my concern is with this is I understand the zero setbacks go with the zoning. It's not a request of the developer. It's just naturally something that occurs with MX fringe zero setbacks. I appreciate how Sherman and Associates are not building up to the edge of the river. I believe the river should be used and to the benefit of everyone. So is there a possibility? Yes, there is. Is there a possibility that in the future, these MX MX fringe potentially zoned spaces can have some sort of mandatory variance that you allow for public usage along the river? In other words, do we need to do something to protect the river for public use along both sides? It's usable on the east side of the river because it goes up to the T by Oakwood Cemetery, but it's not on the west side.
Point of order. I would say that that's a great question and maybe not germane to the specific item for a future discussion.
Well, zip zip ahead thirty forty years when when this building gets taken down and now all of a sudden somebody can build on the property.
Go ahead, Mr. Yetzer.
So yeah, there is a required forty foot setback from the river.
Oh, awesome. So MX fringe has nothing to do with any of that. Awesome.
It's the flood.
Yep, the canal. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Otherwise a motion?
I'd like to move to approve a zoning map amendment CD twenty twenty three dash zero zero five Z C.
Second. All right, Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I did go to some of the neighborhood meetings on this. This again is they put a lot of work into this. I do cringe a little bit bit difference between looking at a project and looking at the the usage. But in this case, this is we've been working closely on this project and I think it'll be a good downtown fridge project.
Yeah, I would just add that I know it's been a journey to get here and I think it's really exciting that we found a way to move forward and make this project happen. Other comments?
Phenomenal use of the space and great design. Thank you for all your efforts.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, we're moving on to item G six, which is the text amendment number CD twenty twenty three zero zero one TA by the City of Rochester, which is the Unified Development Code update. And Mr. Yetzer, we have you here. I'll give you a minute to set up and just remind people that this is a city led amendment, so there isn't an applicant. We are the applicant, but we will have people speak during the public hearing.
Good evening, council, Mayor Norton, members of the city council. I'm here to talk about the Unified Development Code six month update. I have a short presentation and then would be happy to answer any questions you folks might have. So it's only been six months, but I thought it would be helpful to provide some brief history on how we got to where we're at. So the kickoff of the UDC itself occurred in January of twenty twenty. The city council adopted the UDC on September seventh of twenty twenty two. At that time, we said we would be back with within six months to do some cleanup that we knew would occur with such a large document after we put it into use and everybody was looking at it and everybody was asking questions. And so that's what we're here to talk about today. And then from there, we're committed to at least yearly updates from thereafter. Since January first, we've had over sixty development applications submitted and over thirty neighborhood meetings submitted as a result of the the standards. And so we have put this document to use and we've have some cleanup items of what where wording could be improved upon and those sorts of things. And that's that's why we're here in front of you. We don't want a document to just sit on a shelf forever. We want to make sure we're updating it as we go. And so today there's some updates, there's some reintroductions, and there's some new items which I'll cover here in a moment. Another reminder, just real quick on kind of what led to the UDC process. So again, we had a number of different groups that influenced our work throughout this process, including groups like Rochester Area Builders, the Chamber of Commerce, Our Neighbors, the Housing Coalition, et cetera. We also had a stakeholder group, which I will get into here in a moment. I also wanted to reemphasize the amount of engagement that went into the drafting of the Unified Development Code. Some things to highlight, twenty plus stakeholder sessions, ten plus neighborhood meetings, twenty six plus community events, over two hundred and fifty hours of engagement opportunities, eighteen different media spotlights. And so we really did try to talk to folks and get feedback as we were working through that two year process. As for the stakeholder advisory group, this was a group of industry professionals as well as neighborhood advocates that we really worked in working sessions going, you know, section by section to get feedback and ensure that we were putting standards together that were workable and supported the different initiatives of the city council. And so what did the UDC accomplish? It aligned our development standards with the comprehensive plan. It created an efficient and predictable approval process for neighbors and developers, created a high quality base standards that reflect reflect best practice and it aligned our incentives with city council priorities. One item that I want to spend a little bit of time talking about tonight, and I know that you all have heard of this item as well is billboards. So there are a number of standards, which I'll get into in a moment, that were unintentionally left out of the billboard section that we intend to clean up tonight. But I wanted to provide a little bit more context for you all to make sure that we're all on the same page on how we got to where we're at with billboards. Really, what our intention was from the LDM to the UDC was to carry forward the billboard section that this timeline displays has long was a long process to get to where we were at. With one exception, based on our counsel or our consultant's recommendation, we did tighten the standards around the lighting of billboards and specifically electronic billboards, and I can get into that in a moment. But I wanted to quickly run through this. In nineteen ninety two, the city council approved a text amendment that established location is established and of the permitted billboards as well as, you know, the different distances that are required. A lot of the standards that we see today in terms of distances from schools, from churches, from community institutions, from residential districts, et cetera, as well as establishing a sign credit system. I can't, I don't think I can over emphasize how much work went into that as I dig through the files. At the time, Q put together a subcommittee that included the billboard company and they worked for over a year on those standards, putting together multiple reports that ended up in the standards that were created in nineteen ninety two. In nineteen ninety seven, the city issued a moratorium on billboards because the sign credit system wasn't working. Essentially, they were issuing too many billboards and they put a put a halt to issuing any more billboard permits. They spent over a year studying that issue again with Q putting together reports and having a working group. And from there in nineteen ninety eight, they created the billboard cap system. So there's a lot of stuff that happened between nineteen ninety two and nineteen ninety eight. This is not a comprehensive list of text amendments. There was some litigation that took place regarding different amendments. A lot happened in that six year period that led to the ordinance that we have today. And that's really what I want to impress upon you all is that this a lot of work went into the ordinance and then it sort of stops. And the reason is because the ordinance that we've had in place since ninety eight is working and it works the way it's intended to work. And so I just want us to be really intentional about any changes we make to those longstanding policies. I didn't include some proposed amendments in two thousand five and two thousand twelve. I know there's been discussion about West Circle Drive and billboards, and so I thought it would be helpful for the council to understand that twice proposals have been brought forward to allow billboards on West Circle Drive and twice those proposals have been denied. Also, there's a notion out there that billboard, the reason they didn't think billboard should be along West Circle Drive is because they thought West Circle Drive was going to be residential. That's not the case. As you read through the reports, there's council minutes during these discussions where they very clearly say that this will be a commercial and industrial area. They still chose not to permit billboards on that route. So just wanted to provide that history for you folks. The UDC cleanup for billboards specifically addresses unintended or unintentionally omitted standards such as height and size, which I'll get into on the next slide, clarifies lighting conversion regulations, clarifies sections causing confusion that we have learned more about as we've engaged with one of the billboard companies and then continues the thirty year sign credit and twenty six year cap system. So some updates for the UDC cleanup, annexation vacations, variances and wetlands. So a couple of our processes were just errors were made as we were finalizing those, and I can get into each of these if you have specific questions, but I just wanted to flag these four processes as things that we are cleaning up as we've noticed that there was errors in them from what was in the LDM to what was intended in the UDC. Reintroductions, as I said, billboard size, height and the permitted zoning districts was unintentionally omitted from the UDC. We're plugging those back in exactly out of what was in the LDM. The minimum parking stall widths was unintentionally omitted as well as buffer yard requirements against vacant land. And so we are addressing those omissions as well. And then the two items that are really completely new are a public facility use through some conversations with Olmsted County Public Works as well as our own public works team. We realized that a use category for public facilities was missing, and so we have introduced that. And then spacing requirements between liquor stores and cannabis sales near schools is also being introduced as a totally new concept. So happy to answer any questions on any of those. I know this is a public hearing and I can I can take questions afterwards. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I do have a few people signed up to speak, so we'll start with Casey McGregor. Please introduce yourself. You have five minutes.
Casey McGregor, this is really short. I'm just, this is sixty pages. I'm just curious on what makes it to a study session and what doesn't make it to a study session? Because it's such a big topic. It's such, it's so broad that I just feel like this should have been a discussion before we hit here. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And again, if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine so we can see that you are interested in speaking. Otherwise, Nels Pearson, come on up.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, Adam Mayor and city staff. My name is Nels Pearson and I am a Real Estate and Government Affairs Representative of Reagan Outdoor Advertising. I, first of all, we just want to address, we we are under the standing that there will be an amendment offered to these changes in a text amendment, an amendment to the text amendments, and we are supportive of that amendment. I want to thank the city council members for each coming out and taking the time to visit with folks at Reagan Outdoor Advertising. I have been in your shoes before and and I know that listening to constituents and learning about industries is a part of the job, but all of you went above and beyond and we greatly appreciate that. We we at Reagan Outdoor want to be a better resource and a neighbor to the communities that we serve. And and we believe that the changes that we are proposing are good for all of those in in this industry. I also want to thank city staff for working with our industry to hear our needs and our concerns. We've had many great conversations and we recognize that what we have discussed has been heard. We hope moving forward, we can work with the city to implement implement new technologies and better locations to better serve the citizens of Rochester. We thank the city council and staff for their consideration. We appreciate their compromises that we have been able to work to make in a short amount of time. And we hope that we can continue to work together to improve the outcomes of public communication and aesthetic beauty in the city of Rochester for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. All right, Mr. Reagan? Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Billy Reagan. I'm with Reagan Outdoor Advertising, and I want to thank everyone here for the opportunity to address everyone this evening on this subject. I appreciate all the time and effort everyone puts in and that your sincere interest are for the benefit of the city. And I mean that sincerely. So thank you very much. Good evening. As I said, my name is Billy Reagan. I'm here on behalf of our company, Reagan Outdoor Advertising. We at Reagan believe that we need to be active members in the communities we serve. So I want to take this opportunity today to express how important this market is to the future of our family business as well as provide some background about us. My father, Bill Reagan, started our family business over fifty eight years ago. And together with my brother and sister, we have grown our business into seven market areas. Our corporate headquarters are located in Utah and we have six other markets that we operate in, including Minnesota, Texas, Tennessee, Iowa, Nevada and Indiana. My mother and father have been visiting Rochester for their healthcare for many years, and as a result, they fall in love with this community. They recognize the blessing this community has to so many, which is why they've also began to invest here. Initially with our billboard investment and the acquisition that brought us this market, and then more recently with our recent purchase of the guest house and in suites, which we look forward to working with the city on that project as well. In all our markets, as I said, we believe in being good stewards of the community as well as maintaining positive relationships with the local governments as well as nonprofits in order to create better messaging for the public, whether it's a request for public service such as health vaccinating, excuse me, health vaccines, homeless shelters, or if asked to post in the event of snow emergency, which I have to be honest, doesn't really happen in Texas, where I'm from Austin, by the way, so that's where I live, a little bit different weather right now, about a hundred and four. We are ready and willing to answer those requests when we have the available inventory to provide. We know that providing timely credit and credible and helpful information in a variety of locations can be a formula for success for our local advertisers as well as for our communities. There's an important point I want to make tonight. Here in Rochester, over ninety five percent of our clients are local businesses. They're trying to reach people in the Rochester market with their goods, products or services. I think this is very important to stress because we're a driver of local commerce and that generates local sales tax that goes right back into this community. And it's really important that everyone understands that, that we help Rochester thrive and the business of Rochester thrive. As my associate referenced, I know there's some proposed language before tonight. I echo his sentiments. I appreciate the efforts on staff as well as you all in regards to consider our concerns and look at these items as we move forward. Obviously, they spent a significant amount of time with the UDC rewriting it. The only thing I would ask is if something was drafted thirty years ago, I doubt they helped. They brought it forward in other areas of the UDC. So just keep that in mind when you're dealing with the billboard ordinance. So but I do want to thank them for their efforts, staff's efforts in particular. I know there's some unresolved issues, but I understand tonight's not the night to address those. We look forward to addressing those in the future. And I just ask that in doing so, we try and balance the desires of effective planning with those of the rights of property owners and the potential benefits of the communication tools that we bring to the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing and oh, sure.
I just have one correction I want to make in response to the public comments.
Sure, would you please make the correction?
Yeah, there was a study session on this on April tenth, just to clarify.
Thank you. I was gonna clarify that as well. Are there questions of staff or the, or excuse me, there is no applicant. Questions of staff, Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Yetzer, you and I discussed about billboard table G one and number two. And I'm going to make a amendment to that, that the static billboard.
Point of order.
Ask questions before we make.
I don't think we have.
I'm not making a motion. I'm asking him a question.
Okay, I thought you.
Okay, I thought you said I'm making a motion.
Can I?
Going to make a motion. Okay.
Go ahead.
I apologize for that confusion. You and I, I've discussed on Friday the, the change there. Or, or do you support that change?
Can you clarify what the change is so we are aware?
So test um number, under number two, um, remove that and adds um static billboards may be converted to electronic billboards in non-conforming locations. Providing the face of the billboard is not directed towards an abutting lot containing a residential use and a lighting plan is provided showing that. Lighting will not spill over into the lot containing a residential use.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Um, I, I would say that our response is that we obviously are supportive of the original language we proposed more, but in. In alternative option, I'm certainly supportive of that amendment as well.
Thank you. So I will make a motion.
Are there other questions? Hold your thought. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Can you please just clarify or let me see what you've written there?
Other questions while Councilmember Kirkpatrick is reviewing the language. Right, so now, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Wong.
Perhaps it's just a, a friendly amendment of a misspelling on page eighty-nine uh and. It's repetitive instead of repetitive.
Okay, that's a scribner's error that, that can be corrected and uh follow-up, Councilmember Keen.
Um, I guess my, my uh, I'm at, we're gonna, or my, my question for staff, we've got. You know, we, this is a text amendment. We're not really dealing with a motion to approve something as uh individual things. There's. Remind me, it's about ninety pages, sixty pages?
That sounds about right. I don't know the number.
Yeah, I, I'm struggling with as we get into this. Uh, Councilmember Palmer just talked about basically a discussion that has happened with staff and there's possible changes. I, I think the, the ordering that I understood for tonight would be that we'd make a motion to approve and then we would amend if we. If there was a consensus or a majority on the council, is that kind of how you see this going forward?
I, I think that that order of operations makes sense. I also think if you include that change in the original motion to approve, that that's another all option as well. So either, either of those I think is viable.
Motion to approve with the amendment, what could be one motion.
The, yeah, and I think it would work. My concern is there's two or three people in the room looking at that. Three or four haven't seen it yet. I am just worried about the. The, the communication of how that gets to council members like Councilmember Kirkpatrick who, or Councilmember Bransford hasn't been exposed.
Some time clarifying it, but.
Okay, all right, good.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, did you have a question?
Well, more to Keen's point, I, when Mr. Yetzer introduced this, the slides weren't numbered, so I don't know which slide to go back to. But there's a couple of things or several things that are being addressed tonight. I, I, I don't know how many hours we could possibly spend on this. To go through every single amendment that I know. I would like to see despite Mr. Yetzer's awesome job of explaining the wetland thing to me today. I've taken that off my little docket of what I want to talk about, but. I've got four or five other pieces I'd like to address with amendments. I, are, are we prepared to sit here for?
You can do a motion to amend, uh, excuse me, a motion to approve with the amendment if that's what Palmer, who's indicated he has a motion would like to do. And then you can suggest additional amendments.
So we can make the motion to approve with amendments and then discuss for several hours and then take the vote on it after we have all of the amendments.
Sounds like a nightmare, but I'm.
Well, yes, that's why I'm asking my question because it's not just a amendment, it's several amendments.
This is the time where the staff are proposing. Language to amend the U D C, so I would imagine this is the time to suggest any text amendments. Uh, Mr. Yetzer, did you leave otherwise?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that assessment. I mean, I, I, I understand what your point is as well. It's really up to the council of how they want to handle this and if they want to move forward with this amendment as a majority or, or not. And if it would be helpful, I can certainly put the language up on the screen if that would be helpful.
So I think the best case scenario would be we get a motion to approve on the table and then we consider amendments one by one. Mayor Norton, what's up?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I, I'm, I have a question. So the first, I guess I have two. The first question is. And then I, one question and clarification. The question, I, I keep hearing that we're going to remove item two directing. The attorney to prepare an ordinance. Am I hearing that correctly or are you inserting something in addition to that? We're not replay, we're not taking number two out.
I'm, I'm gonna clarify, okay, clarify. I'm gonna make a motion to do the whole and then we're gonna make amendments.
Thank you.
And what we're talking about is under a table, there's a footnote number two. That's what we're going to amend and another amendment.
And so. I'm not even sure where we are in the process here. The other concern or question I have is to Councilmember Kirkpatrick's idea is that. There are other people that have other changes in other sections of the U D C. And are we prepared this evening to go down the path of multiple changes? Or are we going to stick to what I thought we were doing this evening, which was a narrow fix recommended by the staff? And other changes would be brought back at another time. So uh, am I, am I understanding that that's the decision we're making? To open this up to multiple amendments and really spend a lot of time.
So, Mr. Yetzer, this is, you have proposed a set of changes, so my understanding would be to keep it within the scope of what. Changes have been proposed and not dig deeper into the U D C in some random. Thing that we have not considered yet as a board. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I would, I would estimate that the digging deeper would happen. In another six months when we go into the U D C again. I recall last September, you saying that we'll probably be going through potentially a couple of iterations. I just want to address the things that have been put.
To clean up language.
Yeah, put in front of us in the sixty or so pages.
Yes.
So those pieces I want to address. Nothing, nothing more.
Sure, yeah.
Except for one little thing. I'll bring that up later.
So Council, Councilmember Palmer change, Councilmember Palmer's change is to language that we have proposed through the U D C cha, cleanup itself. And just so folks are aware, it's on page six thirty-nine of the packet if you would like to go to that page. But, so I would prefer we keep the scope of any changes we're discussing to changes that we've proposed that you slightly agree with or disagree with. And that's what Councilmember Palmer has put forward. The other thing I would say is um, the language that Councilmember Palmer read off is language that our team has reviewed. And believes is workable. And so I would prefer that we don't write code on the spot and rather that was language that was well thought out. And we believe is workable in the future. So um, we can certainly do that on other issues in the future. I just ha, I'm not prepared with other items. Outside of the one that Councilmember Palmer has brought up because others haven't been brought to my attention.
So council can, we can really do what decide to do, but I do appreciate that staff made that request to give us all more time to consider additional changes. That does not mean you can't bring up what those future considerations or proposed amendments might be. Councilmember Palmer, did you have a point?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion um to approve the text amendment number C D twenty twenty-three zero zero one T A.
Second. Uh, and directing the city attorney in part two.
In, in directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
I'm gonna, I'm uh, make an amendment to that and under G, which is billboards.
You read very slowly.
I'm gonna read very slowly. We're gonna start at the very beginning, section sixty dash four zero zero dash one one zero signs. G billboards, under number two, which is the amendment that I'm going to put is just number two. And it's going to read it slowly. Static billboards may be converted to electronic billboards in non-conforming locations. Provided the face of the billboard is not directed towards an abutting lot containing a residential use. And a lighting plan is provided showing that the lighting will not spill over onto a lot containing residential use.
Second.
Can you put that up on the screen? Please.
So the idea is just that we. Are keeping residential spaces from being impacted by electronic billboard transitions from static billboards. That's the idea of the amendment. Does that make sense?
No clarification. No, I, again, I'm listening to the discussion and, and my view is this is much bigger than that. This. This is not, this is, the key part of this isn't the protecting from the neighbors. It's this idea of allowing non-conforming billboards to update. To update to electronic.
They are not affected.
Again, but that's the key thing happening here right now. That's the difference. Amendment really has to do with that, but then there were these protections put in afterwards. But I, I want to make the, the point here that this was one of the keys points of contention was that this idea of being able to convert. In a non-conforming area.
Right.
This, so that, that's what the amendment is about and then there are protections for certain situations.
Yes. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, what is a non-conforming billboard? And why do we have them?
I'll give you an example. Um, Hill Playmore Ballroom has on highway fourteen, two faces. One faces the neighborhood, one faces the highways, non-conforming because the building's been torn down. And so as soon as a building is, is built there, it will be conforming. About the front, the faces the highway would become electronic and the backside would not become electronic because that faces the neighbor, neighbors.
Mr. Yetzer, do you have that slide with the list of conforming requirements?
He has the um, language up there now. There we go. Sorry. So, yeah, a, a not conforming billboard can occur in, for a number of reasons. Um, there are restrictions on how close a billboard can be to uh residential property, to a school, to a church, to a public institution, et cetera, et cetera. So um, it's, it's entirely conceivable that a billboard is built and is conforming at the time and then. A church moves in and it makes that billboard non-conforming or residential property becomes uh residential zoning creeps within. The permitted area and so now that over time that billboard becomes non-conforming. We also have billboards that have been in place since before these types of regulations were in place. Zoning, we, we, we don't force that billboard to be taken down. We, over time, the billboard becomes non-conforming and they relocate those into a different location. Majority of our billboards in Rochester are likely non-conforming.
Okay, that makes sense. So then to put this into real time, so to speak. The billboard located on the southwest corner of Thirty-seventh Street and North Broadway or Highway sixty-three North, the southwest corner by the rental place. Is supposedly a double-sided billboard. However, the trees along the path have grown up so tall that the south-facing. Second side of this billboard isn't even viewable by anybody. So that means that the north-facing side of this two-sided billboard can be changed to a digital billboard because it is non-conforming.
So I, I'm not picturing the exact billboard you're talking about off the top of my head, but it could, under Palmer's amendment, it could be converted. Provided that a budding lot does not have a residential use on it.
The abutting lot of the south-facing.
Of the face of that, that they're changing, yes.
Yes, so they could convert the north-facing side that goes to the rental depot and the.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
That one may have been.
And to get to Councilmember Keen's point, that is the significant change that you're talking about because under the language we've suggested, we are saying. You cannot convert non-conforming billboards to electronic billboards. Instead, you would have to relocate that board into a conforming location.
If you were going to create an electronic billboard instead of the static billboard. So. Councilmember Palmer's uh amendment is just intended to allow a little bit of flexibility to the billboard companies. If they're in non-conforming locations, as long as we are. Eliminating or minimizing the impact on residential areas.
Well, with the right amount of money, I see it possible to convert, like Mr. Yetzer said, nearly, or many of our billboards are non-conforming. So I can see with the right amount of money, many of these billboards being converted to electronic billboards.
Well, under the amendment, as long as they're not negatively impacting the residential areas. Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I hear there's still a lot of confusion. Um, I know this is a very complex and important document that needs to be looked at. So I would like to make a motion to continue G six to August seventh. Council meeting and then use the open date of July thirty-first. Another study session on this issue.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you. Um, I feel this is such a complex, like I just said, uh, uh, document. And um, most of, not, there's very array of specialties here on council. But I know as a school teacher, this um is not my forte and I think to be a good policymaker and really. Um, do the best for Rochester and not wait another six months. We should um take more time to understand. And as a study session, we can freely ask questions. We can propose things that we think would be beneficial. And then um, it can come back to us uh the next week um in, you know, similar format, but it probably would go a lot faster. I know a lot of people here are not waiting for this particular subject. They have maybe um waiting for the next um agenda item. And to keep everyone here for a couple hours or however long it takes to go through all these amendments, I don't think it's fair. And uh, for everyone who attended, that's also, I believe, the best thing to do for good policymaking.
I did uh, talk with city staff today for about twenty-five, thirty minutes on this topic and was able to fairly quickly. See what the impact would be and where there would be restrictions. So. I would say instead of a study session, having a chance to sit down with staff, if we are going to continue it. Would be more effective, but go ahead, Mr. Yetzer.
Um, just in, in regards to that motion from a staff perspective, I would strongly recommend against um continuing this item. There are a number of standards in this U D C cleanup that development applications are waiting on that are unintended consequences affecting a development. That we really need this cleanup to happen. Um, and so I would encourage you to make the decision tonight on the U D C cleanup. Um, we can certainly come back and talk about billboards at a future study session or, or whatever the council chooses. But um, from a staff perspective, my recommendation would be to move this forward one way or the other tonight.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to continue? Just, Councilmember Keen, or excuse me, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, then Dennis.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Yetzer. So the development issues um surrounding um the U D C changes. Are they around the billboards or are they around other portions of the U D C text amendments?
There's other portions of the U D C text amendments that I was referring to, but there are also portions of this billboard section that are important to correct tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dennis.
And I just wanted to clarify that on July thirty-first, it's completely open Monday and I know sometimes study sessions are rushed. Uh, things have changed since the last time we had a study session. I think it would be a very efficient use of that um date. We have a growing city. We have, this is going to impact Rochester tremendously for decades to come. And I wouldn't, I don't feel that we should rush through it and have amendments that we haven't seen. Um, try to understand them really quickly here, vote on things without um spending more time. So again, I just, I think that would be a good use of July thirty-first. And then I understand what you're saying, but good policy, I think outweighs um, uh, you know, being efficient. So I would support um this motion.
All right. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, I, I understand the reason for this. I don't consider this so much complex as confusing. And part of this is because of the number of pages in this. Um, I think many of these things that I don't understand as well, I do trust the staff to say. These are put in together and what I deal with then is try to find when, when others disagree and try to get those debates or things to happen. So I'm not going to support the motion to um, to continue.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. On the motion to continue, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Great, motion fails. We're back to the amendment. Councilmember Keen, then Mayor Norton.
So uh, again, I want, I'm glad to see the um text amendment. I mean, remember that these things are complicated because. The U D C is a big set of text. That's why when you deal with making changes, you have text amendments. Um, so there'll always be this thing that it's written in prose and we have to be able to parse it. It makes it difficult to change. But um, that's why we had a study session back in April to look at this stuff. These, these things do affect industry and that's why there's people uh talking to us about them and trying to uh get changes for them. And there's other people protecting the neighborhoods and trying to protect it that way. So in this specific case, I think this uh amendment has had a good hearing with staff. A good review and I'm going to be able to support it.
All right, council, or excuse me, Mayor Norton.
I hesitate weighing in on this. I, I guess I came tonight assuming that we would kind of strictly follow the recommendations that came from staff. And that other ideas we're going to come back later. And I'm, so I'm a little nervous about moving ahead on this, partly because I hear Mr. Yetzer say. We have a lot, most of our billboards are non-conforming. And so that makes me nervous in that. Once that something like this is passed, it is no, no longer within the city council's control. And I'd feel more comfortable if I knew where they were, what they were and how they were affecting, but I wasn't aware this was coming forward. It wasn't an issue. I gave my. And I'd feel more comfortable if I knew where they were, what they were and how they were affecting, but I wasn't aware this was coming forward. It wasn't an issue I gave much thought to. So I I guess I'm nervous about making a change kind of quickly like this to an amendment or to the staff's recommendation, which I was quite comfortable with when I came here, and I'm I'm getting less comfortable as we're starting to make changes um that I just, I don't truly understand at this point. Uh, my preference would be that we wait on it and get more information so that I, you know, for my position, I don't have a vote, but I'd like to be comfortable and you know, making sure we're doing something that's well thought out. So that's just my discomfort right now.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Mr. Wall had his hand up. Why don't you take him first? He hasn't had a chance to speak yet, if you don't mind.
Ransford, then Wall and Kirkpatrick.
Thank you.
I mean, I appreciate the mayor's point of view. Um, but at the end of the day, that's why we're here, and it's a a footnote to a table uh which does have a big impact on a on a particular industry. So, but that's why we're here. This is, this is the process, the producers and the consumers. And here it is in front of us. And if I am uncomfortable with a change that I feel negatively impacts a business, that does have, as Mr. Reagan pointed out, um a big impact on our economy, it puts money back in the in the in the city. Um, that's why we're here and, you know, and we have some president before us, Mr. Campion sent here and made a number of amendments. Um, so it's not like we haven't done this before, and I think they were all good amendments, and that's the process. That's why we're elected. But I sit here, and if it's till three in the morning, that's our job.
Thank you. Uh, I have been pleased to see the technology that uh at least Reagan would use to uh make these nonconforming billboards more effective uh in our nonconforming sites. Uh, I will be supportive of the amendment because many of us have spent hours uh in uh with Mr. Yetzer and Ms. Woodward, uh as well as with each other uh in groups of two or three or one, uh so that we are apprised of what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I want to second what Mr. Wall said. I really appreciate the time that was spent, and I do really commend you on moving to these, this newer technology of the billboards. I was really impressed. I'm very anti-digital billboards. But when you showed me how they worked and I looked at them and the angle difference, it was like, wow, why couldn't have these gone up, you know, twenty or thirty years ago when they were first going up? So my question is, will all of the billboards that are going to be converted, the nonconforming billboards with the option from static to electronic, will they all be this new technology? You won't be using any old technology on any of them at all.
First of all, we can't ask them in real time. And second of all, we just can't make that a requirement, right?
I'm I'm not making a requirement. I was just asking.
In theory, you could make it a requirement. That being said, we don't have an industry specialist on staff that could confirm that this is the state of the art technology at all times. So in theory, you could make that requirement, but we just don't have the expertise to be checking that for every billboard that gets converted.
Well, that's unfortunate, then I'm less likely to support the amendment. And I'd really like to support this work that's being done because I think they've really done a quality job and they have a product that is far less adverse to the community than what we see in other locations. For instance, um the southeast corner of Civic Center Drive and uh North Broadway.
Sure is nice to say that while they're listening to.
Who?
Reagan.
Reagan? In more of the Panacoucan location and, but yeah, um, listening. That's my only question for now. Well, no, I have another one. Mr. Yetzer, do you have any idea how many of these billboards might be converted, jumping off of what Mayor Norton said? Does, does Reagan?
If they do, they have not shared that information with us.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Councilmember Palmer?
I can say that I have been told by Reagan representatives that less than five percent of the billboards in Rochester are electronic. And if they don't see that there will be a significant increase in that percentage going forward.
Less than five are currently electronic?
Five.
But they would be converting the static billboards to electronics, so it could potentially be fifteen percent of their billboards. Depends on how much money they throw at them to convert, correct?
Then certainly that could rise. They still uh believe in the future of static billboards.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Palmer?
I I will say that my discussions that they would only use the two Nick, the new technology. They they wouldn't buy old technology if they could buy it. So um I would call a question.
Okay. All in favor of the.
Point of order, just the amendment. Thank you.
Yep, no, everybody's spoken. So once the question is called, we have to we can't hear more from the no. The Councilmember Dennis, have you spoken on this amendment?
I have not spoken on it. I would, I made a motion to continue, but I did not speak on this amendment.
You are allowed to speak and then we will think both.
I I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. So um the only concern I have is that once everything is shiny and new, and this is actually a concern, not from me, but a resident who brought this to my attention, um that it's going to be hard to take them down, you know, if if we need to take them down. So um, is it possible to um, is it still okay to ask questions? Is it okay? Possible to reuse that? Because maybe I can't ask questions.
You can ask questions of Mr. Yetzer.
Of Mr. Yeah, but I'm not sure. I think it's more of the industry, but to reuse material. Uh, because if there is a situation where residents do not like it in the future, or there's a new company that comes in and, um, you know, what is the, I mean, is that a possibility to um incentivize that that we can actually take things down? Because most people will look at it and say, well, we don't want to, you know, waste this material.
Thanks for that question, Councilmember Dennis. Um, I think that that is exactly the reason why the language that we proposed is the way we proposed it on the original is because disincentivizing investment in nonconforming locations and it for in favor of conforming locations is is exactly what our intent was. Um, and so there that is a concern that once they invest in the nonconforming location, it's unlikely that they'll move that billboard. So that's, that is a valid concern in my opinion and something that you should consider when making the decision.
Thank you. And then I just have a comment too. I feel um having um visited a few times, the new technology does prevent a lot of the light pollution. I have diagrams and we took a tour and walked and looked at at how the billboard, you know, shields from the residents. But the one big selling point I have is that my allegiance, and I've been very open with my allegiance, my allegiances to kids. What's good for kids is good for Rochester in, um, you know, in the future. And when I was told about the efficiency of using electric signs to in instantaneously show an amber alert, instantaneously show warnings or things that that people who might not have cell phones might not be able to see that could potentially save lives. And I know if something happened to one of my children, I would just be so grateful having all these signs light up uh with an amber alert. So I am going to support this because uh it's going to be a safety issue.
All right, thanks for weighing in. Have you vote?
Uh, I'm sorry, so.
No, you have, you've already spoken, so.
I just want to know what we're voting on. Are we voting on the entire text amendments for the UDC or just this particular one for the billboards, please?
We are voting on the amend amendment proposed by Councilmember Palmer, and then we will get back to the original motion. Okay, sorry. Voting on the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Now we're back to the original motion to approve the entire UDC revision. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, do you want to bring up your other concerns?
Yes, I I would love it if I could have the visual of the screen of the items that you had mentioned, Mr. Yetzer. I remember uh that cannabis was on there. And I think that was at the bottom, so there were others that came before that, but I can talk about, uh, you had mentioned public schools or um within a certain distance of of schools or organizations, agencies with a similar intent of a public school having a a set, a set point away. So was that in there? Was that on your slide?
Yeah, so I I'm trying to share. I think they're trying to get the slide up there. What I, what I, what we said is spacing requirements between liquor and cannabis sales near public schools. Uh, on my slide, it said schools, but to be clear, in the text, it is public schools.
I understand that. And one of the concerns I have is about a private school next to a smoke shop um within five hundred feet. So the last clause within this sentence says, or five hundred feet to a similar use that is regularly used by minors. Would private schools fall under that general jurisdiction?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, great. So there's nothing about smoke shops here then. So if there is something in existence now that does not meet this criteria, would they be shut down or would they be grandfathered in?
It would be a, it would be a nonconforming use that would be allowed to continue until they choose to stop or need to be brought into compliance for some reason. But for the most part, they would be what you call grandfathered in. We don't have a tool to to do otherwise. That's state statute.
Thank you.
Did you have other questions?
No.
All right, Mr. Keen, then Mr. Wall.
Yeah, um, again, Mr. Yetzer, you and I have been talking about um billboards and billboards are a big or a part of the UDC. But signs are a lot more than that. And I, there was some sections in here. I was looking at a page um six thirty-eight in my package where we talk about lighting of signs. And I think this had to do with something, we were trying to make an update for billboards. And now we have it included in signs, and I have some concerns that this change, this is changing um the standards for how business signs work too. I think you're familiar with the with the issue.
Sorry, I was looking for the page number. Um, it's not six thirty-eight in my packet, so I was just trying to find it.
It's page two fifty-two in the UDC.
It is page six thirty-eight on hers, so I don't know why mine is different. Um, yeah, so that lighting standard, again, that was um through our engagement with Reagan, that was a lighting standard that they were concerned with. Um, particularly with the language around the source of lighting. Um, we have received some neighborhood feedback that um they prefer the language that we have today. And so to be quite honest, we're comfortable with the language as it sits today. We're comfortable with the proposed amendment. We've also received uh um some neighborhood feedback for a third option, which we would also be supportive of. So we really feel like this is all saying the same thing in a slightly different manner. Our suggestion would be to to maintain what we put in the packet, but if the council wishes to amend that slightly, we would be supportive of that.
So so I guess what I what I'm struggling with is this difference between I, like you said, we had it in UDC one way. It was consciously put in there, and now at this point, we see that it's been changed. I'm worried that if I just let it go, it's now the new standard. But but because of the discussion we just had now on the the one change, I'm uncomfortable with uh making suggested changes to the to the text amendment. I I guess um I, let me, this is more of a question than a than a than an amendment, but could I move to approve the UDC changes, except those in section sixty dash four hundred dot eleven zero F?
We would be, uh, staff would be supportive of that if that's what you wish to move forward with.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, I'm trying to find a way to explain this in a high level here, but the the, so I'll make the motion to um approve the, to amend the UDC changes um to uh accept those in section sixty dash four hundred dot eleven zero F involving sign standards.
That did not help.
Yeah, I I'm trying to figure out a way to explain this. What what's going on here is the billboard companies tried to, wanted to change that staff sort of agreed to, but it 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 isn't just against billboards, it's against all business signs, which are probably ten X or twenty X the number of billboards. So now we're making a much bigger change. Um, as staff reads it, they could say, oh, I could read, I understand you could read it either way. But I've got people reading it to say, we have changed something that we decided to do back in UDC days. And I could say, oh, we can look at it later, leave it go, it's not pressing. But now I've by doing that, I have made a change. I have allowed a change to go in, and I'm trying, I'm fighting the that I'm trying to say, I either want it to go back to what it was or I want to uh go with one of these. I and I don't know how to do it here with seven people. It's just difficult to do.
Yeah, and like I said, um, you're, you are correct. It's on page six thirty-eight. Um, if if you'd like, I'm happy to put the language up on the screen. If you want to take a break and I can put it up on the screen or however you want to do that, just let me know. But that is a change that we would be supportive of of going back to the original, if that's the council's wish. We also are comfortable with the language we're suggesting. Uh, it's really just up to the council of what makes them more comfortable. We've received feedback on both sides of that issue.
So if I could, I'd I'd call for a break and then depending on if, as we see this, I'll try to figure out a motion towards it.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll reconvene at eight five. We'll take our full break right now. All right.
Recording stopped.
You know what? It's, it's page 638. Now, page two of the UDC.
We left off talking about the lighting of signs. And this is item G6. So, Mr. Keen, you were sort of mid discussion and wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, and I'll just, again, just kind of put this in context. We have this big text amendment in front of us that is, I'm gonna call it 70 pages. There's different parts of it that needed to be these different updates. One section was a business sign lighting. And there was, I'm sorry, there, there was a, a change made to it based on a technicality that's actually some accuracy to it, that it seemed to imply that you had to be able to see where the light was coming from. Staff worked with them on it, but others are interpreting it differently. And what I'm hoping for, and Ryan, I hope you have it, that language that it's again, in this section, 60 dash 400.
Clerk, see, I'm, I'm trying to share my screen. If you guys can put what I have on my screen on there.
Very good. Yeah, it's not up yet, but. Yeah. So thi- this, this would be in our, in our packet page, 638 under lighting of signs. And there's a A and B, and this is new language for section B. It is new language because the, the section B was done at UDC. We put in some time into it with certain people working the signs. It had been changed now based on probably some good thinking that said that, that it, it could, couldn't make sense on certain readings. And I think this is a good compromise language between them. So I'm gonna move to amend the UDC update with new lighting language in section 600, 60 dot 400 dot 11 two on page six, 638 of our, of our packet.
B.
638 and, or, yeah, section B. Thank you.
To be.
To be.
Or not to be. I'm sorry, I was reading good.
So again, I appreciate, I appreciate the difficulty of trying to do these text amendments. I, I'm cringing trying to do these on the fly. I, I know how hard these are to see. Again, I, I hope the fact that the staff has kind of looked into this and says, yeah, this makes sense. Frankly, they think the others make sense, but this is a way of keeping people who think there's something nefarious going on here. This is better language for them. And I, I think the staff's okay with it.
Yeah, I'll just chime in and say that this is, what's on the screen right now would be our suggested language. We believe that this does uphold the process that has led us to this point in the UDC and all the work that had gone into that. And so we are supportive of the language on the screen and, and moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wall.
Yes, I appreciate Mr. Yetser's comments and Mr. Keen's motion. I believe it conforms more readily to the, the intent of the UDC and simply clarifies. I'll be supportive.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I, I'm just sitting here kind of amazed. I mean, you typically are not a person that wants to do it on the fly and, and, and there seems to be a person out there that doesn't like the way that the original language was written. So I'm, I'm, I'm at a disadvantage because I, you know, we read this on Wednesday and Thursday. We met on Friday. We discussed everything on Friday. It didn't come up on Friday. And now today at nine o'clock, we're deciding to, to make this change. I, I, I guess I either need a little bit more education or I, I don't know what we're trying to prevent.
Yeah, I, again, again, I don't.
Councilmember Palmer, you literally just did this exact same thing.
Oh, no, I did. Not, not to be clear. We met, we met, three of us met on Friday. We had a discussion. We had a staff discussion. And the staff made a recommendation and we had the weekend to think about it. And, and, and so it's not the same. It's not done. And, and, Mr. Keen, am I right?
Again, you, you might say it's right for three of us, but remember there was four others who weren't there who had the same experience you're having right now of saying something new came up. So I think it is the same. Now, this one I would not have carried in here. I don't like to do these, like you say, at the last minute. But realize that if I don't do anything, it makes a change. That's what bothers me on this one, that there was a change made. Frankly, I didn't pick up on it because it was, it was not under what we were looking at in terms of billboards. I saw other things come out, but this came up over the weekend and I tried to figure it out. And frankly, it wasn't clear to me. But this idea that we're making changes now that affect much more than billboards bothered me. Because in billboards, I think, I don't know the right numbers, but it's like 20x more that this affects because of business signs. There are at least 20x business signs. So that's why I'm pushing this. And I understand if you can't support it.
Well, no, I have a question. This is just for business signs which are different than billboard.
It is not. It's just, it's an area in the, in the UDC called sign, sign lighting.
Both business signs and billboards would be required to comply with this section.
And, and that's how it got munged together. The stuff we dealt with the other day was billboards, only billboards, a different section of the UDC. So with that, again, I, 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 if there's any questions for staff or.
Staff have already said that they're fine with this change, so. Do you need a minute to consider it? Mr. Palmer?
Is there other questions?
Mr. Wall, do you want to deal with this amendment before you propose your amendment?
This is the amendment I would have proposed.
Oh, okay, good. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. How, how is this going to affect lighting being considered down in the Peace Plaza area and its effect on trees? I understand there's some concerns about updating the lighting down there and.
That related to signs? Because this is specifically for signage.
Yep.
I guess I'm not familiar with that.
Well, I'm just concerned about this, this final clause here that says from any public right of way. So.
And a sign itself is defined as, you know, advertising for a company or a business that can be seen from the right of way. So it sort of aligns with that. And just to clarify, this is essentially the language that is in the UDC today. What we attempted to do is clarify the language, and this is a much cleaner clarification of the language that we have been operating under for six months. So while this might feel like a big last second change, this is a very minor clarification in our opinion. But one that we do support because it does, it is a cleaner clarification.
So neither the camp nou lighting or the lighting that would be wrapped around trees would fall under this?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So let's go ahead and vote on this lighting language amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Back to the original motion to approve. Any additional conversation? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Or Councilmember Kirkpatrick, go ahead.
Um, sorry, just kind of going a little slower than you all are here this evening. Thanks for your patience. That slide with all of the amendments on it, were we able to find that? It was in your presentation, Mr. Yetser. I don't recall all of the things that were in there. And the slides weren't numbered, so I was unable to write it down. Toward the end of your presentation, there were bullet points on the left side of the slide.
Is this the slide you're referring to?
I believe so. Go one before, would you please? One before. Okay, now go down to the next one, please. Uh, yes, I had a question about the no buffer yard required against vacant lots. I have two separate page numbers on my agenda packet, so I'm not quite sure which page number to look at for that particular thing. But what I'm concerned about is no buffer yards required against vacant lots. Does it stay that way in perpetuity? Or what happens once that vacant lot is purchased and something gets built on it? And we have no buffer yard there whatsoever. What is the amount of distance that would be between the, I guess, incoming building from the previously
Yes.
standing building?
Yep, good question. So let's say lot A develops and that is a, I'm just gonna make something up, a hotel and lot B is vacant. So what, right now, the UDC is silent on what happens next to that vacant lot. So we're clarifying that you don't have to put in a buffer yard next to the vacant lot. However, once lot B develops, there will be a buffer yard requirement for whatever happens on B to what's now on A. Does that make sense? So there, a buffer yard will be established. But it depends on who's developing, who is causing the need for that buffer yard. And that would be when the next lot develops. So there will still be a buffer yard there. This is just clarifying when it happens.
So the first development or the first building built has a privilege to have more square footage than the second building being built?
Not necessarily. There's still a setback requirement in those sorts of things, as well as base plantings within the UDC. So there's still items there that will.
Got it. Thank you very much. And then will you indulge me another question for the next slide, please? Thank you. I guess I already asked my question regarding smoke shops. And you answered that. I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Wasn't so bad. Good work.
I didn't expect it to be bad.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the original motion as amended with the lighting and billboard change. Good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Carries, thank you so much, everyone. So we are moving on to item G7, which is the land use plan amendment number CD 2023 002 CPA for reclassification reclassification of 45 acres of 120 acre site. Mr. Yetser, it's back to you.
Right. Sorry about that. Good evening. I am here to talk about the land use plan amendment, CD 2023 dash 002 comprehensive plan amendment. This is the result of a council initiated action and which I'll get into here in, in a moment. So. So going back to February 6th of 2023, there was a CIA submitted by council member Palmer asking staff to look into the corner of 55th Street and 18th Avenue and bring back a recommendation to redesignate the property from low density residential to some combination of low density residential, medium density residential, and then commercial or mixed use designation as well. At that time, if you can recall back to February, our team was supportive of looking into that, that CIA under the idea that we agreed it was unlikely that 18th Avenue and 55th Street at such a high order intersection would, would develop as strictly low density residential, as well as the fact that this was within the near term growth boundary of the city limits. We were supportive of taking a look at this and bringing back a professional recommendation of what we thought was appropriate for that corner. So the recommendation that we've landed on is 20 acres of medium density residential, 25 acres of commercial or mixed use, and then 72 acres of low density residential. And I really want to emphasize that this recommendation is based on a culmination of all sorts of planning documents that the city has invested a lot of time, energy and resources into creating, and not only just the city, also the county. And so things like the comprehensive plan and the transit development plan are really predicated on the, this idea of a primary transit network, which I'll get into in a little further. The ROCOG long range transportation plan is almost solely built on this idea of a primary transit network and reducing single occupancy vehicle trips in support of a more efficient way of growing. The integrated strand transit study, same thing, growth management plan, active transportation plan, the link rapid transit. All of these plans are really focused on what is an efficient way to grow. And, and the recommendation that we're putting before you tonight is with all of those planning documents in mind. One thing to mention here early on is that while we have a recommendation, as you all are aware, the, the potential buyer of this property is, has, has a different request, which is what has, I would imagine, led to the CIA in the first place. And so the buyer's request is to have 47 acres of medium density residential, 38 acres of low density residential, and then 30 acres of mixed use. And our, our team is strongly in opposition of that, which I will detail our position here through the next couple of slides. So I want to start with the scenario planning of plan, the P2S Planning to Succeed document. And the next couple of slides, I'm going to get into some pretty, I'll say dense planning principles that I'm going to try to boil down into three slides or four slides for, for you folks to think about. And what I want to emphasize is the, the comprehensive plan didn't just happen overnight. It, it took two or three years of very intense thinking of what is the most fiscally sustainable way, the most environmentally sustainable way for the city of Rochester to grow. And they didn't just do it on the back of a napkin, they did scenario planning. And they looked at three different scenarios, the trend scenario of edge growth, scenario one of a transit corridor, or a transit corridor, or scenario two of what they called like a super, super node system. And so what we ultimately landed on is a transit corridor system. And some key findings of that is growing in that manner as opposed to the trend scenario would reduce vehicle traffic by, or traffic growth by up to 15%, reduce vehicle hours traveled by 19%, reduce increased congestion by 28%. The reduce family annual transportation costs and increase the city's population within high quality transit by roughly 50%. And so it's important to know that, that this plan was extremely strategic, was extremely well thought out, and is something that should really be in consideration tonight when making this decision. So the land use plan, what is a land use plan? The land use plan is the city's guiding document for future public and private investment. So if you recall, the original discussion with the CIA was in regards to the 10 acre rule, as it's referred to. The 10 acre rule says that a land use plan amendment of greater than 10 acres cannot happen outside of the regular five year update. And the reason for that is because all of our city and county and state organizations that build infrastructure, et cetera, look at this land use plan when determining where they need to invest. And so the idea was that amending that plan by, at a clip of 10 acres does not derail your capital improvement budget that looks six, eight years out, et cetera, et cetera. And so looking at things like sewer utility maintenance, road improvements, park improvements, fire station locations, the transit development plan that was created following the comprehensive plan and built on the same principles, the ROCOG long range transportation plan that was built following the completion of the comp plan and built on the same principles, all utilized the land use map when building those planning documents. And so this is a critical tool for how we plan our infrastructure and our capital program. The other thing I'll note is since the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2018, there have been seven total land use plan amendments, including the one we're talking about tonight, five of which have been owner initiated, meaning they were less than 10 acres in size, and then two of which that were city initiated. The one was the large one where the sewer extension is going, and that was to follow the investment that you folks made with the sewer extension. So in that case, what happened was we knew a sewer, we, we made the decision to invest in sewer and we amended the land use plan to follow that, that decision. Want to talk a little bit about demand. We hear a lot about the need for, for housing, particularly in the Maxfield study, and we agree there's certainly a need for housing. Based on the Maxfield study, there's roughly a demand for 10,500 units of multi-family. And that's an important factor because the number one finding that you have to make, remember this comes down to findings. The number one finding that you have to make is that there is an unanticipated shortage of land for this type of development. So I'm going to talk about that in the next couple of slides. So the medium density residential analysis. So following council member Palmer's CIA, our team spent a lot of time, I got to give a lot of credit to the planning team on, on how deep they dug into this. And we have roughly, from the time this 10,500 unit number was created, we have roughly 4,500, a little bit more than that, units in the pipeline. Either that have been constructed and are built, are in construction right now, or in the pre-development process. Those are not questionable projects. Those are projects that we feel very confident are happening. Those projects do not include the riverfront small area plan, the downtown waterfront small area plan, the West Transit Village, and all of the potential projects along your transportation investment of linked rapid transit. So if we take those into consideration, based on all of those smaller plans that you folks have invested in and agreed that those were efficient ways for growing, if you take all of those into consideration, in addition to the projects we have in the pipeline, we believe we have roughly 16,000 units of multifamily development in the pipeline or in inventory, which exceeds the number that the Maxfield study proposes. And so the takeaway here is we believe the city has sufficient land suitable for multifamily development based on both the comprehensive plan and the Maxfield study within our city limits today. What we don't have sufficient of is low density residential. And that is what I really want to hit home here is our team is very uncomfortable moving this amount of land out of low density residential. We hear all the time through conversations with council or through conversations with the housing coalition or through conversations with the county of how badly we need to create homeownership, wealth gaining opportunities. There's a finite amount of land that has infrastructure available at it, and we are concerned with removing the amount of land that we are talking about from that opportunity. This chart, you, you folks have seen this chart before. You folks have heard these numbers before. We're not creating single family opportunities at the clip we need to, based on the Maxfield study and the comprehensive plan. We are creating housing opportunities that we need to for multifamily and those needs, we are not meeting it for low density residential. I'm not just talking about single family homes, I'm talking townhouses, I'm talking row homes, et cetera, et cetera. I think we get into this notion that low density means single family homes only, and it doesn't. And so I really want to emphasize this, that this is a big part of our recommendation is not only do we believe we should be prioritizing multifamily development in a place that's more efficient for the city of Rochester, but at the same time, we're removing the land that frankly, we need the most. I want to talk a little bit about the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sure many of you folks have heard what took place there. On May 10th, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a continuation, asking the city team, along with the potential buyer, to go back and, and talk further to see if we could come to a middle ground on the amount of medium density residential land that was being requested. Our goal leaving that meeting was to help the potential buyer understand all of the possibilities within low density residential. It was very different than when our conversation started under the LDM. Under the LDM, low density residential really meant single family homes and duplexes and triplexes. Under the UDC, there is a whole line of options that could be developed under low density residential. So our, our goal was to help them understand all of the opportunities they had to create, missing middle housing within the low density designation that was already in place. We also wanted to help them understand that if they were truly developing affordable housing, that they could use the multifamily land more efficiently than they could have under the LDM to get the number of units that they felt they needed within less, with less amount of land. And so that was really our goal. I'm sure you've heard from the development team as well of the, the change of the numbers that they have proposed. What I would say is there's been some number shifting of moving it from medium density residential to commercial and then back. And I guess my point would be that at the end of the day, the numbers haven't fluctuated that much, and there is still a pretty substantial gap between what we are comfortable with and what the developer is, is asking for. I want to put into perspective the site a little bit. So just to, just to put into perspective what they're asking for. Again, they're roughly, again, you got to remember that commercial and mixed use land can be developed as multifamily. Now, I'm not saying all of it will be, but you have to keep in mind that it can be. And so they're looking for 47 acres of medium density residential and 30 acres of mixed use that could potentially be in that acreage of 77 acres. If you look at what's at the corner of 18th Avenue and 55th Street today, the Homestead Development is roughly 30 acres with a giant stormwater pond in the middle of it. And so what this would be proposing is something that's more than twice that size. Likewise, north of the Homestead Development, Crimson Ridge is the exact type of missing middle housing that we were pushing to be developed in the low density residential land use. It's an efficient use of land, it's creating homeownership opportunities, it's creating wealth gaining opportunities, all within the designation that's already in place. So on these last two slides here, I just want to quickly talk about the findings. The comprehensive plan put some pretty stringent findings on what things you should consider when making a land use plan amendment, and that was intentional. We were, they really wanted you to think about what impact is this having long term in the fiscal sustainability of the city of Rochester? And so is this addressing an unanticipated shortage of land? Is it consistent with the goals and the frameworks of the integrated land use plan? Excuse me, integrated land use and transportation framework? Have we considered utility and infrastructure costs? Is it suitable for urban development? Will it affect the existing supply of land? Is there fiscal impact? Is a positive to the community? Will it further the goals and visions of the comprehensive plan? And is it consistent with the city's goals and policies? We believe that those findings can be met under the, the acreages that we are suggesting. We do not believe any of them, except perhaps number four can be met under the, the requested acreages. We just really have a hard time figuring out how we can make a positive finding that there was an unanticipated shortage of land when we know that through all of our planning efforts that you folks have supported us on, that we have at least 16,000 units in the pipeline, and that doesn't even count mixed use redevelopment that we know is happening on underutilized properties within the city limits today. And so I really want you to think about these findings when making this decision to keep in mind that you do have to make these to, to find a, a different resolution. So in summary, we believe that the city has sufficient land. We believe that removal of low density land inventory and, and homeownership opportunities is a negative impact on the, for the city and in our goals of creating more single family home ownership opportunities. Adding large acre areas of medium density residential hurts the, the initiative of the primary transit network and the affordability that comes with developing, not necessarily on the primary transit network, not necessarily downtown, but within distance of that primary transit network. And then lastly, that multifamily projects are more affordable for the end user when they are near the primary transit network. And so with that, I'm going to just remind the council of their strategic priorities of affordable living, growth management, and quality services for quality living. We believe that our recommendation checks these boxes. We don't believe that the, the owner's suggestion checks these boxes, particularly of affordable living and growth management. And so with that, I will pause and come back for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yetzer. All right, I have a number of speakers, so we'll open the public hearing. And if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function on Zoom, otherwise press star nine to raise your hand. We will be sure to check. All right, so I have Ryan Schoenfelder to start.
That's correct.
Five minutes and here's the little stop clock.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Norton, Chair, members of the council. My name is Ryan Schoenfelder. I'm a civil engineer in training at WSC Massy here in Rochester. I just want to introduce you. You've seen me here a couple of times now with Bill and WSC for land development projects. And tonight, I just want to give you my personal testimony as a young professional who works in Rochester and wants to grow their career. Like many of my peers, classmates, who I've spoken with recently, which consists of nurses, engineers and business professionals. We work in Rochester, but struggle finding housing that's available or affordable for someone who's just out of school. We don't qualify for low income housing. And being out of school, like I said, we can't afford a traditional down payment on a home, but the interest rates at their current level. If you take a look at the rental rates in Rochester, especially taking a look downtown near the core, the rates are significantly higher than those in other parts of the city. Not to mention that downtown or even near the PTN, there's economical retail and grocery options for people who might be trying to save money. The issue Rochester is currently facing is really a simple supply and demand issue. In a situation, the city has low supply and high demand, leaving prospective residents like myself left to find options outside of Rochester due to the costs and availability. Both of the proposals tonight that you saw by the city and by Anthony Properties do a good job of providing homeownership and wealth gaining opportunities, and I'm in support of that. However, when used in this manner, young people like me can't afford a brand new home. I strongly encourage you to consider the offer by Anthony Properties so myself, along with other fellow young professionals have the opportunity to contribute to and utilize all that the Rochester residents has. We are the future of Rochester and we want to contribute to its continued growth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so I'll back up and invite Justin Todd up, or you guys can decide on your order. I, I have you listed all over the place, so. Come on up, Bill.
Before the box starts, might I just mention that I'm going to use exhibits because we hadn't figured out how to self-run our program here. So that's on us.
Okay.
Just like to hand these out if we.
Okay, please hand them to our clerk. All right, and Mr. Twain, can you pull your, the microphone down a little so we can hear you better?
This better? Okay.
You have five minutes.
President Carlson, Mayor Norton, and members of the council, I'm Bill Twain. And I'm speaking in favor of this amendment by Anthony Properties to change the land use on 115 acre piece of property. I want to start out by saying, number one, the first exhibit you have is a location map where this property is located. You saw that earlier in the presentation. But I want to let you know that's the only part of an intersection with major roadways, 18th Avenue and 55th Street that's not been developed. The only intersection, part of the intersection has not been developed. The second exhibit shows a land use amendment that was proposed by Anthony Properties. We've had so much discussion about numbers. Numbers are floating all over the place here. Where it was by Anthony Properties is 47 gross acres, gross acres of medium density, 30 commercial gross acres and 38, 38 low density. And you flip to the next exhibit, number three. What's really important here is that when you take an acre of land, you say, I want to develop an acre of land, only a certain percentage is developable. So you need to reduce those quantities by what is not developable, and you'll see on this. And you'll see on this map that you have here where all the roadways and the storm ponds and wetlands and steep slopes are located, we can't develop those areas. So that's why we work off what is the net. And there is a difference. There's a gap between what staff is proposing based on the twenty eighteen comp plan that was first proposed in twenty fourteen, nine years ago. And I said at that time, and I'll say it again today, a comp plan has some good things with it. It has some bad things. It's a very expensive plan. Whenever a government directs where people should live, how they should live, what style of housing they should have, the price goes up. We're trying to do here with the Anthony Properties project is to provide additional housing in the area that's needed. And this is crucial, which wasn't mentioned in Mr. Yatzar's report. Timing. We're going from twenty twenty three to twenty thirty. Some of the plans that he shows, like the smaller area plan that I helped work on also were for, right, Mr. Reagan, is out fifty years. We're talking about today to twenty thirty to get this housing stock up here to level the rates. If you look at the next slide we have in here, you know, no one predicted the pandemic, no one predicted the high cost of developing the quarry of Rochester. The land values have soared, interest rates are, homes have increased significantly. There's been a change in workforce setting downtown, so there's financially damaged some businesses. It's not attractive right now and never maybe should have, you know, we should have some fringe area development. And then there's one issue I want to just leave you with. And that is the consumers want a choice of the style of living they can afford and desire and to where they would like to live. And these are your constituents who want a choice. Historically, the citizens of Rochester have had a choice and selection of housing by affordability and location. And that's what's made Rochester such a great place to live in. Options, choice. Other factors support this land use request are the infill area. It's infrastructure. If you look at exhibit five, you'll see the the email from the City Public Works Department indicating we have sewer service. We're not asking the city to go anything for us. We're doing it all, we're paying a hundred percent of it. And if you look at the the next slide, slide six, it shows a demonstrated need there. Yes, it's ten thousand five hundred and seventy one units, and yes, there's a lot of units probably that we know are under construction and are, Mr. Yatzar, indicate there's some that are in the wings. Well, it might go and it might not. Anthony Properties is going to help improve that supply this much, this much by their forty seven acres of medium density and your commercial. And if you look at slide number seven, I really want you to consider that. That's what we did a survey of and found the rental rates to be in town today. You heard Mr. Schoenfelder talk about affordability. It is tough. Your grandchildren are going to have the same trouble. Your children might have the same problem. That's what they're up against today in Rochester, whether more supply, you tend to level out the rates. That's what we're trying to do here. Anthony Properties has developed all over the United States. They know what it takes to make a sustainable development work. You add risk to a project when you start controlling what you can do with the land use. And that's the point we're trying to make tonight is I think we've got, they have a very good opportunity.
Time to wrap up, Mr. Twain.
Okay, this last thing, last slide. I know you're not, can vote on this. You can see the last slide. Well, look at how much money they put into this to show you what they can do on this site.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off. Right, who's next?
Good evening, Council and Mayor and city staff. Thanks for the time tonight. My name is Justin Todd, and I'm with Anthony Properties. We are the intended developer on this property. Since twenty seventeen, we have constructed nearly a thousand apartment units across the United States. Anthony Properties is experienced and a profession at what we do, building high quality housing at prices residents can afford. We are excited about the opportunity to develop the Danielson Farm property. Our plan is to purchase these one hundred and fifteen acres and over ten years, invest millions of dollars into creating housing for seniors and others, which in turn will generate millions of dollars annually for the city budget. Five minutes isn't a lot of time to discuss a project of the size, but here we go. I'd like to make just two points today. One, this is a good project. And two, the city council makes housing policy. Point one, why is this a good project? Rochester's housing woes are well documented, and that was before Mayo Clinic announced four point four billion dollars in new investment. This project, as shown on slide eight, will bring four hundred and eleven units designed for seniors and nine hundred and sixteen units at market rate for others. Obviously, every senior moving out of their current home is an opportunity for someone else to move into theirs. So there are many positive ripple effects when senior housing is created. Our master plan also calls for restaurants, a daycare, and other retail uses. The housing shortage in your community is severe, resulting in higher cost of housing. A solution to your housing shortage is to increase the supply of housing. We can timely add one thousand plus units to help the housing shortage. With your approval, we are ready to proceed to increase the supply of housing units to stabilize the cost of housing in Rochester. There is existing infrastructure for this project. The roads and utilities are there, a fire station, a brand new school are right there. So no additional immediate publicly funded infrastructure is needed. This development will cost over sixteen million just to tee up before we can even begin construction of housing units. We buy the land, we build the roads, we pay for the utilities to be brought in. When completed, your residents will have needed housing, and the city will have roughly two to three million dollars in additional tax dollars every year. This project provides an option for those who prefer not to live downtown. Not everyone wants to live in an urban setting. Our development will be more spread out and provide more green space for residents compared to urban projects. This project can get built. In the report, city staff note that there are three hundred acres of developable, developable land, suggesting the units could go there. We have looked and we couldn't get anywhere close to that number of available acres. But even assuming it is true, we have a simple question. If that land makes so much sense to develop, why is it still vacant? You might be waiting a long time for those acres to be developed. This project is before you and is ready to go now. So this is clearly a good and needed project. Point two, the city council makes housing policy. In good faith, we tried to work with development staff. We lowered our acreage, our acreage number several times, moving closer to staff's number. In response, they moved even farther away. That was frustrating, but we get it. Your staff is trying to implement housing policy as made by the city council. The current housing policy is dictated by the twenty eighteen comp plan. But did you know the process for the comp plan began began in twenty fourteen, nine years ago? A lot has changed in the past three years, let alone nine years. It is a responsibly responsibility of the city council, not staff, to make policy and for the staff to implement. That may mean may mean being flexible enough to allow development that wasn't anticipated years ago. For what it's worth, no one expected the inflation we have today or the broken supply chain or interest rates at six to nine percent. Your staffs said our project would bring about housing that was less affordable to the end user. That is an interesting take from a city that has for years been increasing SAC and WAC fees and creating new fees. But our business is creating housing people can afford, and we know what we're doing. We've been building housing for many years in many states. We do this work every single day and know what it takes to do it right. We respectfully disagree with that assessment. In closing, we have altered our original ask considerably, but today we must ask humbly that you allow us to build forty seven gross acres of medium density residential and thirty acres of commercial. That is what we have, that is what we need to have a successful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Brownlow, did you want to speak?
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, Council. Eric Brownlow, Southeast Minnesota Association of Realtors. The headline read, "Study: Rochester on Verge of Housing Crisis." That art goes written by the Post Bulletin, May seventh, two thousand and fourteen. In an effort not to reiterate whatever thing has been said, excuse me, that same year, Rochester had three hundred and seven active listings on July first. In twenty twenty, that number was two forty three. July first, twenty twenty three, that number was one ninety one. All parts of the city, all price points. We ask that you support this project because it will bring much needed housing to the Rochester area. It'll keep people in Rochester. We support this decision and will continue to throughout the entire process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this item? Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Council President, members of the board. I appreciate I spoke here with you earlier on this issue and pass. And I, a couple of things I want to make sure I hear from Mr. Yatzar for fact is that speaking on behalf of my neighbors of the Bourdon Valley subdivision, just to the north of this properties and discussion is that Thirteenth Avenue and Twelfth Avenue do not go through into the subdivision.
He'll respond after the comment period.
As the comment earlier was that it was not, and later I heard somebody's on a mic. We want a fact. That being said, it was also shared at that meeting. And and I know Dr. Danielson very well, I used to hand him instruments for a number of years. When that subdivision went through, because of the topography of this land, there's runoff, lots runoff, whether it's snow or rains, which we could use some, but there needs consideration for retention ponds, just as we were discussed or heard earlier with the senior development that's just to the west of Eighteenth Avenue there. Something's considerable in that like has to probably be thought about on this property. Also, Dr. Danielson and Mr. Batterson and Mr. Klein, who were here, but had believed there was a, there's a berm there on the north end of this property that just to the south of just these avenues that I'm talking about, Twelfth and Thirteenth, to protect water runoff going through these home and housing and yard developments down there. So and and due to erosion in itself and the agricultural practice that's been going on for all these years, there's some degrading of that. And already some of the runoff is highly noted, so. Please take that into consideration in the development of this. That's all we're asking. Otherwise, looking at this map like you have up there, gone from twenty three to thirty acres of commercial, depending what the commercial is, I don't think our neighbors have any problem with that. Medium density, if it's anything like what was earlier discussed on the other side, Eighteenth Avenue, I don't have a problem with that either. When it comes to things like high density, we've all, we all feel we live close enough to the gates of Rochester as it is. We don't want anything like that in our neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Wall. So please take all that into consideration because there's already homes and lives out there that feel like have mistaken what's happening here. And and I love the fact that Dr. Danielson and his family given this property, I'm not giving it, but I'm affording this property to go to the city as a development. Hate to see the farms go, being a farm boy myself once. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, any other speakers? Again, virtually, raise hand function or press star nine. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Jury. I'm a realtor here in Rochester, and I just want to cover a few points. So the the staff has referred to sixteen thousand units in the pipeline. I would like to understand what they mean by pipeline. I think what he was more referring to is currently zoned as. Now, as a developer, one of the things that they need to make sure that a project does is ROI out. And unless those medium density zoning areas are in enough density, it will never make sense for any developer to build a medium density unit on it. So that sixteen thousand acres in the pipeline, if they're not clustered together, the chances of them ever turning into an actual apartment or town home is very, very low. This area does have appropriate infrastructure, and it was mentioned multiple times, including sewer roads. We've all been on Eighteenth Avenue and Fifty Fifth Street. It was recently completed and expanded, so there's, you know, the the traffic isn't an issue. So from a realtor's perspective, you know, low density is definitely a problem. I deal with it every day. There's not enough homes for me to show clients to. The the prices are too high, but that's not Anthony problems, Anthony Properties problem to solve. It's not the landowner's property to solve. It's the city's, you know, problem to solve. And by trying to force the seller of this property, the Danielsons or Anthony Properties, to be pigeonholed into the only way that's making sense is to have such a significant portion be single family residential. Well, guess what? It's not only not going to get you a single family residential, it's not going to get you anything at all. So I just did a, working for another client, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house right now, which if anybody is kind of keeping an eye on the market right now, it's not a super fancy house. It's a, it's a decent house, is three thousand dollars a month with today's interest rates. That's, that's with five percent down, you're still at three thousand dollars a month. As we try to attract new workforce into Rochester, three thousand dollars a month isn't going to be, isn't going to work for people. It's going to be too expensive. So some people might be in that fifteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars and need to rent for a few years until they establish a career and start earning more money, which is what this project would allow us to do. It'll probably be argued that we can build homes for less than three hundred and fifty thousand, but it's not true. There, there's no homes that you're seeing in Rochester or have seen in Rochester under three hundred thousand dollars in new construction in the last few years, and it's not getting any better. Money, money is getting more expensive. So I guess the last thing I'll say is you're being given the opportunity to literally create hundreds or a thousand places for people to live in Rochester at an affordable rate. That's seniors, that's, you know, young folks like Ryan spoke earlier. It's your guys' option to do it. I mean, obviously, the city staff is putting in a considerable amount of work to, to, you know, give you the information that you're working off of. But in the end, it's your guys' decision. So knowing that you can, you know, today approve a project that will bring a thousand new places for people to live in Rochester, I strongly encourage you to consider the developer's request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? You told me to cross you off the list, so I bet, but go ahead.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for your time. I'm Mark Utes here on behalf of Anthony Properties. I want to thank all of you for your time and commitment to the community. I want to thank the city staff for your dedication and work. We all know something is obvious in this community, and that is we have significant growth, but we have a shortage of housing. Government can't do it all. We have a developer today that is ready to go. They're experienced, they've done this type of development before. As we look at some common articles in the Post Bulletin, can a solution of housing shortage be at hand? Well, we have a solution tonight to put a dent in some of that, some of that significant shortage. And the part of the solution is a company that is experienced, that's ready to go now. There's some wonderful planning that's taking place, but that takes time. You've seen charts, you've seen the numbers between now and twenty thirty, there is a demand, there's a need for over ten thousand units. Anthony Properties today could get started and put, you've heard, a thousand to thirteen hundred units today. You do have the authority, you are the policy holders, and we would encourage you to take advantage of somebody that's come to our door. They're not asking you for any money. There's the infrastructure that you've heard. You, you have spent, we have spent in our community thirty three million dollars to do what? To build out a beautiful Fifty Fifth Street. Go look at the record. When that road was proposed and approved, one of the concepts was this could spur development. What about the fine, wonderful schools we have in this community? Just a short few years ago, three or four years ago, we were asked and our community approved a hundred and eighty million dollar proposal to do what? To build Overland School, Dakota Junior High School, some remodels for Bishop and Longfellow as a product of the public schools of this community. I, I'm so proud of what this community has done. Let's now take advantage of this project that your, your officials at the community auditor Suster's office said this would generate for Anthony Properties could generate two point six million every year in revenues. Let's take advantage of somebody that's knocked on our door. They're not asking for infrastructure, it's already there. And I just want to thank you again for your consideration. Please have. And I just want to thank you again for your consideration. Please have a good night.
Thank you. Any others?
Hi, Casey McGregor. I had no clue I was going to get up here, so I have nothing prepared. But this has moved me a little bit. I was. Eighteen when I went to trade school, so by the time I was nineteen, I was out of school. So I was in my career by twenty-two and making income. I was able to buy my first townhouse in Rochester at age twenty-two. That opportunity has led to part of the success in my life. A huge chunk of the success of my life, because when you own something, you are attached to the community, you're attached to stuff. So this development where you can get homes now for the kids that are twenty-two. It's the best way to start your life moving forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Right, any others? Okay, we will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Yetzer to respond to some of the comments that came up. Do you want to start? And we'll ask additional questions as we feel like they're missing.
That sounds good. Thank you. Just to address the first question, that was more of a direct question, twelfth and thirteenth street connections. There's a number of processes that will follow this regardless of the decision you make. There's an annexation that will follow. There's. A general development plan. There's then a likely a preliminary plat followed by a final plat followed by site development plans. So just know I, I can guarantee you that the plan that was shown in front of you will change from what you're looking at tonight to the time a development happens guaranteed. The other thing to answer the gentleman's question of twelfth and thirteenth street. It is likely that those connections would be required. It hasn't, that's not been decided. That's what all those processes would figure out. We haven't talked to the township. We haven't talked to the county. We haven't sorted out exactly how that would work. But it would be on, it would be unlikely and it would be uncommon for us to simply not connect roads through that look like they should be connected through to. Support all of our connectivity processes and standards that we have otherwise. So just know that that plan that shows not, no connection there is, is likely to change. Some other points that were brought up that I want to touch on. I made the same comment at the planning commission. I'll make it here. Under no circumstances is the comprehensive plan old or out of date or. Shouldn't be considered because of this notion that it's from twenty fourteen and it's too old. I mean, that, that's simply not true. Comprehensive planning, you look at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the line. Looking at five, seven, eight-year-old plan is not old and it should not be considered as such. Couple brought up, you know, that there's not enough housing inventory. There's not enough listings at three hundred active listings years ago, one hundred a day. It's exactly the reason why we don't want to remove this from low-density residential. We know that there are properties within the city limits that can develop for multifamily today. That will not happen. Downtown waterfront southeast is not going to turn into a single-family development. There's only a finite amount of land that we have infrastructure positioned to support single-family development, and this is one of them. Saying that they pay for a hundred percent of the development is exactly the type of thinking that gets you into sprawl and unsustainable development. Yes, they build the street and then you maintain it forever from then on. So saying that it costs two million dollars and they cover the cost of it is simply short-sighted and fiscally irresponsible. Controlling growth is exactly what the city needs to do. That's exactly what your comprehensive plan does. There's a number of municipalities that don't allow land use plan amendments for the impact it has on your infrastructure planning. My plea to council will be to double down on Rochester. They talk about the investment Mayo Clinic is making. We know developers, we know investors want to invest in Rochester. You have the ability to choose where that investment happens and have it happen in a sustainable manner. There's, and then the last point I want to make is. If, if I hadn't spoken before, a lot of those public comments, I think I would think that we suggested no housing here. I mean, we, we are not suggesting that this property doesn't develop as housing. We're suggesting twenty acres of multifamily residential development followed by thirty acres of mixed use. And then another seventy-five acres of low-density residential development. All of their points that were made along, not everybody wants to live downtown. There's a school out there. There's a fire station out there. There's sewer there. All those are true, and that's exactly why we think it should be developed as the way we're proposing. So with that, I will pause and and take any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you. Mr. Yetzer, I've sent you some questions before we're going from real quick. I, I watched the planning and zoning meeting that spurred some of these questions that I have. So we do have, we do update the, the land use plan every five years, correct?
That is the intention, yes.
And when's the last time we did that?
This would be the five-year mark right now.
Okay, but we haven't planned on doing an update yet.
No.
Okay. This is a private development project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There is a sewer availability for this site?
Correct.
Public roadway improvements aren't needed. Eighteenth and fifty-fifth Street are already improved.
Not necessarily true. Eighteenth Avenue would likely need to be. Have some sort of improvement done to add turn lanes to handle the addition of twelve hundred units that is being proposed.
Other than turn lanes? Those aren't going to change, okay. We're not going to increase the fire department travel distance?
I don't know the answer to that, but not in a significant way.
I mean, for me, a common sense standing at the corner in front of the, the funeral hall and looking to the left, the northwest corner. Thinking that the northeast corner would probably develop the same. That's kind of my, my, my thought process.
Yep, and that's our thought process as well, which is why our suggestion is in line with what is at the northeast corner, not more than twice the size.
Okay. And, and it does fit into the ROCOG?
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. Take a look at the ROCOG plan. There's a whole section on. The primary transit network and building a, a transportation network that assumes a reduction in vehicle miles traveled. This idea that, well, everybody out there will just drive into downtown. Alright, let's talk about building parking ramps and, and building. Widening streets and all those sorts of things to make, to make that happen. I mean, that's the sort of. Infrastructure planning that leads to problems and parking problems. So I, I don't, I don't agree with that ROCOG supports this.
Okay, and so watching playing in zoning meeting, we were talking about the new park and ride at North Broadway at the rec center. I would expect that people would drive there and board the bus there. You, you don't believe that would be true?
I believe that there's a portion that, that could, but to build. A subdivision and then rely on one park and ride to handle the entire subdivision when you've got a hundred and however many thousand people in this city, I think is short-sighted. So yeah, I think that that park and ride can handle some, some development there, which is why we're proposing development there. But to suggest that all of these people will own a car and drive to the rec center and park there, I think is, is short-sighted infrastructure planning.
Okay, in, in the current property tax is being paid on that property right now, seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, I, I confirmed with the county that it's an agriculture designation, and so all I can say is by changing the land use. To commercial and multifamily at the clip you are, you're only increasing the taxes there.
You would be increasing that.
Right.
More than seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, so where I'm going to kind of go with this one, this is my, my, basically my last question is, you know, at the planning zoning meeting, the question was asked. Is, is one development in the hand better than two in the bush? Which, which make, made me kind of think and, and you know, watching that plane zoning meeting, you know, is there a middle ground that, that we could go to or where, where could we go? You know, and then at the planning and zoning meeting, so, so you know, she said maybe thirty acres, there's really no magic number. So if we went to thirty acres of medium density. Would, would that blow the plan out? Would you be comparable with thirty acres more than just twenty and keeping the, the, the commercial at twenty-five?
Yeah, it, it's a difficult question. Because again, going back to the findings, we're supposed to make a finding that says that there's an unanticipated shortage and through our research, we really haven't found an unanticipated shortage. The reality is what's driving this is we're looking at that corner and we agree that something other than simply multi or single-family or low-density makes sense there. That's how we came up with the twenty number. So. We came at this from a point of putting out the most we felt comfortable with. So going to thirty, does it make us uncomfortable? Yeah, it, it makes us uncomfortable. Is it better than what is being discussed otherwise? Yeah, we think it's, it's better than what's being discussed otherwise. But I would maintain that our suggestion is what we've proposed. But if that is not an option, then I would say that your suggestion is better than the alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Wall.
Is it, if we were to pass on the, the current proposal from Anthony. Are there developers out there that would like to take this on at the numbers that we are suggesting from the city?
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I think that goes back to my point of double down on Rochester. There's a number of sites that we've seen where a developer says, well, this isn't workable. And then it only takes a matter of weeks and a new developer is in looking at the same project through a different lens and finds a way to make it work. So yeah, I believe that, that this property will develop with whatever designation you, you put on it because. The reality is the market is calling for this property to be developed and it's ripe for development.
Councilmember Kate?
I, I just like logistically, this is a land use amendment. Remind me, you, you showed me the criteria early on. Is this quasi-judicial against that or is this judgment?
Good question. A land use plan amendment is not quasi-judicial. It is a legislative decision. That being said. The council was very intentional about putting findings in the comprehensive plan to, to have the right frame of mind when making this decision. And so while legally speaking, it is not a quasi-judicial decision, I would strongly encourage you to consider those findings that were well thought out when making this decision.
Okay, good. No, it's helpful. The, the other thing again, I guess I'm trying to figure out some way that I'm, I'm uncomfortable. I mean, I'm looking at this as a. Land use amendment thing. And again, I've got this backdrop of this offer, this plan, but I, how much should I consider that? I'm, I'm really, I'm trying to focus on the land use and not assume this, this thing's going to be coming in there. It seems like we, we've munched the two discussions into one.
Yeah, you bring up a good question. You know, things like will affordability or market rate units or senior units, those that really shouldn't come into the, to, to the consideration. When you're making this decision because none of that is guaranteed, all of that could change. And so what I would strongly encourage council to think about is take the, the sort of. Economics, if you will, out of the discussion and really think about what is the sustainable. Solution for the city and pick, pick what you believe is the most sustainable solution for the city and, and I'm confident develop will follow, development would follow.
Okay, thank you.
I have sort of a detailed question about the. Actual developable acres, that comparison. So in there. There exhibit three, which I bet you don't have.
I have it.
Okay, well, the storm water pond. Is in the. Commercial space.
Yep.
And then the roads are sort of all over the place. So the pond and the roads would take away from. Medium density residential and commercial or mixed use?
Yeah, the way they have it currently laid out, it would take away from the commercial and mixed use acreage. On that same chart, you see they have a net acreage of what they believe could be developed.
Yeah.
I can't confirm nor deny that. I, we, we've not looked at it to that level, so I don't necessarily have a way to say that that's not true. I do believe that environmental features will make this less land developable than just the raw numbers that we're talking about. That being said, you should consider the raw numbers because that's what you're designating the property as. And they'll have to follow the development requirements from then on.
Super helpful. If I may, you're not approving the development. You're approving a land use plan amendment, and so there are a number of processes that would have to continue through the development process. Where we have the experts, stormwater people looking at that to determine whether or not the runoff, where, where that would go.
Absolutely. Right, Councilmember Palmer, then Kirkpatrick?
Want to make a motion soon?
Okay, do you have a question?
Does it always have to be a question?
Yeah.
Really?
Before we have a motion in a public hearing?
Mr. Yetzer, can you comment on the comprehensive stormwater management plan that was discussed earlier today? And the issues with the King's Run area that is in direct. Outflow area to the southwest of this development located at the northeast corner of fifty-fifth Street and eighteenth Avenue?
Not sure I'm the best person positioned to comment on that. I believe Aaron Luckstein is online. I hate to put him on the spot last second like that, but Aaron, are you able to address that question?
I am online, can you hear me?
Did you hear the question?
I did hear the question. I can comment on it. I guess are you, is there anything more specific that you are seeking?
Not really, Mr. Luckstein. Thank you for being on. My concern is about sustainability and the environment, and it was very, very good to hear the. The comprehensive surface water management plan study session today and coming off of what Mr. Yetzer had just said about. This really isn't about the economics. This is about long-term, long-term sustainability for our community and the growth that we're going to seek. How, how by twenty thirty, we will not be able to achieve the housing density we need. And I doubt that it can even happen by twenty fifty, especially when we have those stormwater laws changing. Runoff issues, environment, you know, the surface water, groundwater collision that we have here in Homestead County, et cetera, et cetera. I was just hoping you could kind of take that area of geography, the water flow that. Head southwesterly from that northwest corner over to the King's Run area and how during the comprehensive surface water management plan. We, we had talked about that King's Run area. Needing some extra care along with Cascade.
Sure, so a couple of things. One, keep in mind the comprehensive service water management plan has not yet been approved. So from a decision-making standpoint. That should not come into play, I guess, on this land use plan amendment. However, as you note, this is an area, the King's Run area, as well as this area, it is a sensitive area in terms of. The hydrology, the soil types that, that are available or that are present on this property. Based on the, should this land use plan amendment go forward? And a proposal, development proposal come forward, we will need to look at that. In terms of rate control, the type of best management practices that they propose on the site. Whether that be under the current both engineering and UDC requirements or. Future requirements at the time based on any changes that are made as part of the comprehensive surface water management plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, final questions, Councilmember Dennis?
So this question is for, is developer, I think it's a, I'm not sure what I can ask here, but.
No, sorry, the applicant is the city, so we have to stick with.
Oh, I have to, okay.
Asking the city.
So I guess the city might not know this, but. With, I said, you know, we were not looking at the details of what's being. Put forward because things can change. Can something be put into? To ensure that there's accessibility, that there's affordability. Are we just voting just on the zoning? I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. I wish I, I imagine some of my colleagues may have talked to you and like on the phone or in person and. I wish I was able to do that. I may have these more understanding, but what is the. Things that we can do to ensure that the developer. Holds the promise?
Yeah, there's nothing you can do legally to require affordability. I'll, I'll start with that. As, as far as accessibility, you can be assured that they will be required to fall, to, to follow the building accessibility building codes that are required of every development. But you can't require anything beyond that. So you, you really should make this decision based on what you think is right for that area, not necessarily based on the economics of affordability, et cetera.
Thank you. Alright, is there a motion?
I'll make one.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you. I make a motion approving the land use amendment number C D twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two CPA to amend the comp plan. Land use map generally situated at the northeast corner of fifty-fifth Street and eighteenth Avenue Northwest from LDR. Low-density residential. To thirty acres of medium-density residential and twenty-five acres of commercial and business development.
Second for discussion.
So what I did was I increased it from twenty acres of medium-density residential to thirty. And the rest now for that is a couple-fold and, and one of them is, is watching the planning and zoning meeting. They're supposed to be, they, they had go back and forth and stuff and. And and I really do respect the the land use plan and everything that's coming up. But I think, you know, one of the comments that was made was that, you know, one in the hand, a good developer who's willing to move on it right now. And to lose that for 10 acres just seems like a lot. And I and and Ms. Carlson, you you brought up the fact that that, you know, we've got a retention pond in there and some roads in there. And and I I think going to 30 acres, it may or may not make the developer go, yes, this is a wonderful thing. I believe it will. And I don't think to disrecks our our plan at all. But I think 10 more acres of medium density isn't going to be hurtful. I think it'll be helpful, and that's the reason that I made the motion that way that I did. And I go back to 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 your question about the 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 river and everything else and the the water that's running off. You know, we have standards already, it's a cornfield. It's going to be much more improved and it's going to have retention ponds. And I don't know exactly where that stormwater runs, but I don't think it runs the King's Run. I think it runs down to the Zumbro River. Knowing that 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 area, so I don't think from a water quality perspective that that we'll be gaining better water quality with a project like this. So that's another reason that that I think that this is a great plan. Again, I stand there and look at that corner. And I think that the corner is just right. If it could be just like the northwest corner for the northeast corner, I think that'd be great. And I again hate to lose this for 10 acres.
If I were to make a motion, which I'm not going to, but for consideration, I would amend that to ask staff to go back and negotiate with the developer for up to an additional 10 acres of medium density residential and why not, let's see, motion to, okay, here it is. Since I'm not making the motion, I would say a motion to continue to date certain of July 24th, I believe, meeting with the, no.
It's unlikely that we could get RCA in in time for that meeting.
Okay, August 7th.
That would be
Okay. More feasible?
That would be more feasible, I just finish.
Okay, so the idea is I'm not totally opposed to what you're saying that up to 10 additional acres. But I would still like staff to be able, if there's willingness, to come to an agreement. And if not, then we don't move forward.
Okay.
So Ryan, go ahead and weigh in.
Yeah, my only comment on that is I I feel like that's putting us in a tough position because I don't see, I don't see any way the developer comes and says, you know what? You can negotiate up to 10, but we really want six. Like, I I just don't see that being a viable option. I feel like you're kind of making the decision there. I also feel like the staff really isn't in a great position to negotiate on this because what we were asked to do was put our professional recommendation, and that's what we feel like we've done. The council disagrees with us, they disagree with us, but we feel like holding our professionalism is to hold our spot on what we believe is truly the most that we could support here. So I I appreciate the intention of of the motion. I just feel like it's it's a little bit disingenuous because it's putting us in a spot where how are we ever going to get below 10 acres?
Very good points, councilmember Palmer.
For just for discussion, I I think having it be at 30 acres, period, end of story, they either take it or they walk. And and I think that that kind of does what you're trying to say, that it does do.
Yeah, I mean, if staff is telling me that that's not going to help them and they are where they are, we need to make the decision, then that's fine with me. I just I agree that there's maybe a little room for flexibility here to make this project a reality. And I think it's worth a shot. I mean, they could still say no, right?
They could still say no, they could take the 30 and run with it, or they could say no. And they know that we're, I'm not moving off 30, you're not moving off 30.
I feel like 30 is a little bit arbitrary, but it's better than
Well,
where we're at.
It's, you think about, if we didn't split the baby, I mean, they started here and we're going 10 more, and and I do respect the the comp plan. And that's the reason the 10 acres in my mind kind of come, the one in the hand, you know, having that that in the hand developer of quality developer makes sense to me. And it would move it quicker.
Let listen to the discussion.
Yes, let me think this through a little bit more, I've been all over the place, councilmember Keith.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to ask staff, Mr. Yetzer, you had a chart up before with the criteria, the eight criteria. I I wanted to have that in front of us as we had this discussion. And I, again, I my hope is to ask councilmember Palmer, just like to look at these and see which ones you're saying are not holding or which ones are are because I I don't feel confident, like you say, I want to go to that corner and look here and say, this is what I want to do. I I want to go with the idea of hiring city planners. And this whole discussion here was very interesting to me, this idea of like, just let the marketplace do it, don't you guys try to be involved? I mean, it's the total opposite of what we've been set out to do here with a comprehensive plan. We're not supposed to just let the market decide where they want stuff. And we just roll with it because that's what the market wants, because that's where you get city sprawl or inefficient services. We're supposed to try to take control of it, and I don't think that's what we're doing now. But I still wanted to understand this specifically as a as a land, as a specific decision on 120 acres and what criteria we're using to make those. I understand the staff can come with one set of beliefs and and we can change that. So it's not that it's wrong, but I do want to see see that. So councilmember Palmer, again, I I don't think I'm supposed to be able to do this, but can you just talk through your recommendation based on these? You're you're saying there is a separate, like a unanticipated shortage of land? Or it's consistent with the goals or which ones do you think we're adding 10 acres for? I I'm struggling with it.
And I I look at it, this is 20 acres works, 30 acres is is that is not bad. It's it's good, it's not a lot more, it's a little bit more. I I watching the planning and zoning meeting in May 10th, they sent it back to the staff to say compromise, meet in the middle, do something, whatever. And they didn't, and and I respect that, I know why they did that. I'm not, I'm I'm not throwing our our staff under the bus. But I think for 10 more acres, I believe that we could get this deal done. And I think it's so close, you know, could 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 you say that we have a shortage of land? Yeah, I think we do have a shortage of land. And and I look at this corner as you you know, if this was in the northwest, the new sewer district, I'd have a different story on this, but this piece of property is so unique and so it should have been developed a long time ago. And and I'm sorry to say this, but in in this, I've said this to other people. The northern border is three and five acre lots that the county already has. We can't grow anymore to the north. And that just really strangles Rochester. And we can't provide sewer, we can't provide buses, we can't provide, you know, the snowplow. I mean, there's a lot of of things that are wrong and that's just, that's a bugaboo since the 90s for me. So, you know,
And and we've had those discussions, I I mean, I realize there's these other constraints. I I'm still
But but look at the utility and infrastructure cost. Is it going to cost me more to have 10 more acres? We already have the roads in there.
Yeah, but but councilmember Palmer, the problem I'm having here is you're you're doing this based on the deal. I'm trying to ignore the deal and saying, is this the right way that we should be doing land use? You know, on this edge of town, I I mean, is this similar to Hardest Arms out on the edge of 40th Street Southwest? And you know, to me, this is where we're supposed to be building those single family houses that we have consistently said this would want to be doing. I I mean, like you say, this 10 acres, I I I don't want to get caught up in like, I want this building there and that building there. I don't want to be a part of it, but I also don't want to say, hey, you guys, come and build them wherever you want, we don't care. What do we care about? And I have consistently heard on this on this Diaz that we talk about, we don't have enough single family house. And here we are trading 60 acres of it away before it even gets started. The fact that this is a unique thing is I understand there's some backstories with don't sell this for 20 years and all that kind of stuff. And those unique things will come up and happen. I'm still looking for the idea of like, the staff says, we've done our work, this is 20 acres. I can find my way towards 30, but I'm trying to understand from a from a finding. I'm trying to stay within our our guidelines to say, we're not finding an unanticipated shortage of land. I don't think we're finding consideration of utility infrastructure. I I'm trying to say, are we really, are we really just saying like, we're trying to be nice guys to people? I that's just not, doesn't feel like a good way to run the city.
And I would agree, and I'm not trying to be a nice guy, but but what 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 I'm, I figured out in my discussions and thought process is this not single family dwellings that can be built the other spots. Not, that's the only thing, which can be built there is what he calls low density townhouses. And low density townhouses are what's across the street. He showed us a picture of that. In my head, that's called, from a building code perspective, an attached townhouse. And so you're not talking, you know, single family dwellings, you're talking about townhouses. You're talking about other items that they can build, their row houses you could build, they're not just
Talking about it, so
No, we do.
Density, it can be any of those things and there's not a
But that's a definition of low density is is townhouses and attached townhouses and in row houses and stuff. And so if you do go down the the whole list, does the and does 10 acres make a difference? Does it adversary adversely affect existing supply of land? 10 acres doesn't. Fiscal impact and positive net benefit to the community, there's a net benefit to the community. Will future goals and vision of the comp plan be be there? It doesn't affect the comp plan. It consistently the community goals and policies. I think it does. And I think that's our job is to is to make that determination. And that's why I made that motion, I'm not any more than 10 acres. It I'm not, you know, we're not 60 acres more, just 10.
Can you take it out of the commercial?
I don't, I don't want to.
Well, they can already build medium density residential in the commercial.
Yeah, again, I, the fact is the commercial, and now I'm getting very practical here too. No one's going to build the commercial, no one's going to build the the low density. The only thing that's going to be built is the medium density. And then the other things are going to be, I think what I heard the word said is, you know, we we have that, like somebody else might do it, but I don't think it's us. So i- in the practical sense, what we're doing here is approving how much they do on the medium density because I think that'll be the first order of business. And again, I'll I'll leave it be, I'm I'm just trying to get my head around what we're, the the motion is to override staff's recommendation. It isn't written that way, but it is, and I'm I'm trying to get my head around it, so.
Right, and you bring up so many good points that I've been wrestling with too. I mean, yes, and also we need housing and also we need low density housing and homeownership.
I think we should clarify that low density also includes single family homes.
Well, yes, single family homes, townhomes, he had that slide that went over all the different types. Mr. Yetzer, and then I think we're going to take a 10 minute break.
The the other thing I want to throw out there is I appreciate councilmember Palmer's point of it's 10 acres. But but if it were only 10 acres, this could have been done at a at, you know, within their, within their right, right? But it's not 10 acres, it's 55 acres. That's what you, that's what you're changing is 55 acres or 45 acres. And so, yeah, if it were just 10 acres, we would be comfortable with it, but that's, it's not what that is. It's 10 acres beyond what we're comfortable with. And and so I just want to make that plea.
All right, let's take a 10 minute break. Sorry to do this in between items, but I think we need a little moment. So 10:30 on this clock.
[Music]
One of us is thirty. I, at this point, I, I'm not going to support the motion until I get with, with the information in front of me.
It's Councilmember Keen, I, again, I'm all over the place because it is incredibly hard to sit up here and all of the conversations we've been all of our community members and feel like we're voting against housing. But I think it's really important to emphasize that this is not voting against housing. This is voting in a way that's aligned with our priorities. And forty-five more acres of opportunity to build medium density residential than we had before, yet preserving a significant amount for low density that is providing that missing, potentially mi- missing middle or at least opportunities for homeownership, which was one of the top priorities of our council as well as our, uh, community through our Maxfield Study and Housing Coalition. So I thought I did feel like there was some flexibility, but it feels arbitrary to me and I just am not sure I can go against the Planning Commission's decision and our staff's decision, which aligns so closely with so many of our investments and our planning documents. It just feels too arbitrary to me. I guess that's the best word I can use.
So if someone to call the question?
Councilmember Bransford, you haven't had a chance to speak?
It's because I've got a lot going through my head. I, I, the interesting thing is, is I agree with every, every, almost everything that's been said here and I myself have said we need more low density housing as well. The question I have just is, and I understand we're not trying to make the deal, but if ten more acres helped it to actually happen is, is a salient question. It's, it's a legitimate consideration. And I don't think, um, you know, I hope staff doesn't take this the wrong way, but I don't know if ten acres is really a hill to die on. But I, at the same time, I really, really understand what they show as what they're comfortable with in their professional opinion. Get that. I respect that. But as a policymaker who wants a development to come in faced with, well, is ten acres a make or break? I, I have to say, I probably do, um, agree with the thirty acres, just specifically from the point of view of if, if they walk, they walk and it's just ten acres. And if it means that it pencils out for them, that's a good thing. So I'm very weakly in support of the thirty acre idea, but it's, it's a complicated problem. It really is. And I don't want this to take away from housing along the TOD and take away low density housing, but we're talking about ten acres. And if this helps pencil it out, then that's okay with me.
All right.
We may not agree, but that's what I think.
Kirk, any comments?
Um, yeah, I guess they're very similar to Bransford's. Wow, so many people that I respect came to speak tonight. Mr. Brownlow, I remember campaigning. I learned so much from you and I've reached out to you a couple of times since twenty twenty and, uh, to learn even more and to find out if my hunches were correct. Mr. Twinton, you, you know your stuff. You're good at what you do. Um, I appreciate the community engagement. But we will not meet our housing demand by twenty thirty, no matter what any of us do. And I seriously doubt we will meet our housing demand by twenty fifty. Our city is growing at a rate that, that is not sustainable. Period. End of story. I will argue with anybody about that. Not trying to be negative, just simply being a realist. So with that in mind, I turn to my schooling and what I know and the boards that I sit on. One of the strategic initiatives with the Board of Water and Soil Resources that I was just recently reappointed to by Governor Walz is that we are looking at land use and development. We are, we are turning our sights to that because it is becoming incredibly important. As we keep growing our communities across the state, one of the, um, considerations, especially in southeast Minnesota, is the convergence of surface water and groundwater. We can't differentiate between those two here. Um, surface water becomes groundwater within a matter of minutes. There's almost no place else in the state where it does that. We've got a select few counties here in southeast Minnesota where that happens. So when I consider all of those variables that have been mentioned tonight and the really beautiful plan that's been presented, I look at it and I just think, wow, that's really lovely. The space that's been left by the township properties of the larger acreage, um, the consideration for roads. But the bottom line is the sustainability of our city and where we think we're going to be going. And I, I, I first kind of approached this like an Occam's razor theory. We've got two problems, transportation and housing, which one's the quickest and easiest to fix? Oh, housing, they're right here, the developer, easy. Let's go for the housing. And when I spoke with Mr. Yetzer today and he said, this is not the place for this much or this type of development. It's about using our infill for this type of development. So this isn't a vote against housing. It's a vote for land use and, um, I, I, I really can't condone it and I, I appreciate what Mr. Luckstein said about, well, the comprehensive plan hasn't been approved yet. I'm, I'm not buying that either. We need to step up our pace for the things that we do that are going to secure a future for our children, for our future residents, for the environment that is going to sustain all of us and, um, ten acres may be very helpful. It may not be. If the Anthony folks decide they can't work here on this, what we agree to, I know there's going to be another developer waiting in the wings. We are a very hot community. Um, we're on a lot of people's radar and, um, I guess that's really all I have to say about it, but I can't, I can't support your amendment, Mr. Palmer, at this time.
All right. So again, it's not, it's a, a motion. It's the original motion. It's the only one we have on the table. So it's just to be clear. It's not an amendment. It's just a change from staff's recommendation.
Point of clarification. Could we have that read again? Because I said, I said.
Sure, go ahead. Uh, Councilmember Palmer.
Approving Land Use Amendment Number CD twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-two CPA to amend the comp plan, land use map, generally situated at the northeast corner of Fifty-Fifth Street and Eighteenth Avenue Northwest from low density residential to thirty acres of medium density residential and twenty-five acres of commercial and business development. And I like to have roll call vote.
So I just think, I just want to make sure everyone is clear. It's different than what was in your packet. So what you'd be voting on is yes or no to the motion. And if it failed, you could make another motion. And if it passed, then you would have thirty acres rather than twenty.
Yes. All right. The main account in that situation, clerk Giesler? What's, I'm sorry. So we've called the question. We've allowed councilmembers Bransford and Kirkpatrick to speak, but.
That's your call. Sorry, it is.
Do you have one very quick concise comment?
After all we've sat through tonight and will continue to sit through. Okay.
Let's go ahead.
So I'm, I'm going to weigh in on this and I'm going to ask, um, that the council not support the amendment or the motion on the table and support instead the motion as recommended by staff for a number of reasons. One, this was a CIA that was in not in line with our current practice, with the density we've been trying to build, the policy we've been setting in this community. So the CIA initially was a standalone. Our staff have spent a lot of time working on this. And I've sat and listened to the Planning and Zoning Committee hearings, the Planning and Zoning Committee hearings. Support the staff and they were pretty clear about supporting the staff and their recommendation. One of the pieces of documentation that was shown earlier was vehicle miles traveled. And two of us, me and one of our staff, Matt C, serve on the state's Vehicle Miles Traveled Committee. And we talk about these issues all the time. And so again, the staff made recommendations based on the policy that the former council and that this council has supported up until this point. And we should continue to follow the policy that we've put in place and that the staff are recommending on this issue. I truly appreciated, uh, Councilmember Kirkpatrick's comments. They resonated with me strongly and kind of pushed me to decide to say something on this. Uh, it's been very frustrating, um, sitting here listening because yes, like all of you, we want housing. I think the staff made a good point early on telling us we're going to get housing along the corridors and with the policy that this council and the previous council have committed to and invested in. And so my recommendation is to not support the amendment or the, the motion on the table, to vote it down and to come back and vote on the staff's recommendation and pass that.
Thank you. Point of order, did you have?
Ms. Carlson, I just want to clarify the loop of the, the, the zoning rules allow the city of Rochester's city council to bring in more than ten acres and that's what, what was it done? The process that we have is the CIA. That's the process that we did. I know that the mayor doesn't like CIA's, but it's our process that we have.
That sounds good. All right. Let's do a roll call vote, clerk Giesler.
Councilmember Keen.
Nay.
Councilmember Bransford.
Aye.
Councilmember Wall.
A reluctant no.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Nay.
Council President Carlson.
Nay. And we needed a super majority anyway, so motion fails. Is there a different motion?
I'll, I'll move to adopt, uh, a, approval of, uh, map, uh, current classification of a hundred and twenty acres on the northeast corner of Fifty-Fifth Street, Eighteenth Avenue, to, from low density to twenty acres, medium density, twenty-five acres of commercial business.
Second. All right, Councilmember Keen.
Uh, again, I, I, I don't feel like we're do, we're doing exactly right business here, but this is the staff's recommendation. I think the key thing for me is when we start talking about, uh, if, if this really is a competitive build, are we building our, our medium density in the wrong place and making strategic decisions against our link and against our other decisions?
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I just want to say I'm very thankful for the CIA because it gave staff an ability to really analyze and look at this. And I think in this critical area at this time of growth that we're experiencing, it was really important for that to be done. So thank you for bringing that CIA forward.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilmember Palmer.
Well, and what the mayor doesn't remember or is forgetting is on May tenth, this, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, voted to send it back to the staff to compromise or come up with something. And you know what? They came back in, in, in July and they had three members gone. They had one that abstained. I think it was a three to two vote. Um, and so it wasn't overwhelming from the Planning and Zoning Commission that, oh, jeez, this is what we want to do. Not once have I spoke against our staff. Not once have I said that, that, um, what their plan was, was wrong. I respectfully asked if thirty acres would, 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 would blow it out of the water. I was still, nah, you know, we're not comfortable, but we're okay comfortable. And, and so, you know, I, again, and I have eight minutes to speak and, and I probably will take all eight minutes. You know, to have the mayor speak about a CIA that as, as, as Ms. Kirkpatrick said, it was the proper thing to do as well within the zoning regulations to do is just frustrating and, and to, to, to lose. Again, I'll go off the Planning and Zoning Commission from May tenth to have one right there and have that burden hand and, and, and say, nope. Um, we don't want you. We'll wait for someone else to come. And we're going to have another cornfield sitting there. We're going to make six thousand dollars in tax property taxes again. It's, it's just really, really frustrating and, and, um, you can talk all you want about wanting housing. I'm, I'm, I'm not buying it.
Do you want to just hum for another six minutes or what, what were you going to do with the rest of your time?
I should be respectful when I'm sitting here.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So I guess I just also want to elaborate that the wealth of knowledge that staff has, uh, is amazing. So uh, thank you for all the work you did putting this together. And I agree with Councilmember Kirkpatrick. It's a needed to do right now. I, I just heard a lot of people talk about transportation and I just wanted to chime in about the lack of transportation to this site. And, um, I, my kids and I, we love the movie, um, Field of Dreams. And there's that famous line, build it and they will come. Or something, if you don't know the line exactly, but I think the reason we don't have a lot of transportation to that site is there's nothing there yet. And it would be wasteful spending for the city to have, you know, a lot of transportation to that site without housing there. So I think if we put housing in places, then we can, um, have transportation, uh, get to those places and make it more, um, livable, um, economically feasible for people to live all around Rochester because we are going to be growing and we should give people choices. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I abstain.
Councilmember Dennis, did you vote?
Yeah, I said aye, but really quietly for the so I did that for the, for housing, always for housing.
All right. Motion carries six zero one with Councilmember Palmer abstaining. Okay, so it is almost eleven o'clock and we have one public hearing left and we are in our rules needing to consider suspending the rules in order to start a public hearing after ten fifteen?
I would move to suspend the rule so that we could start the public hearing after ten. Is it ten fifteen or ten thirty?
I think it's ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen.
All right. Any discussion?
I, I would be of vote against that. I think that we should continue an important subject like this, um, to another time.
I, I actually, um, have, although I feel so bad for people who have come and waited so long, but I have to agree with Councilmember Palmer. More people would be here if it wasn't, you know, eleven o'clock and I had to work the next day. So I think to give more people a voice and to be able to speak and then just basically, um, having meetings so incredibly late. I, I don't think it's a good policy because of, of, uh, just brain function. Thank you.
Point of order, can we open the public hearing? Allow those to speak who are here and then continue the public hearing and offer a chance to additional public speakers who couldn't stay this late and then do our discussion and vote at a subsequent.
Sorry, Council President, just one moment. I want to look at the rule.
Okay. So that would mean that we wouldn't have our discussion until next meeting, but we would allow those who have come tonight to speak.
I don't, I'm just going to say while the rule is being looked up, I don't think that that has anything to do with the rule. I think that if you over override your rules to allow it to be open, you can leave the public hearing open procedurally and completely be item to a future date, just like you would if it wasn't ten fif- after ten fifteen. You always have that option.
But you, but when it's open, you wouldn't, couldn't make any decisions.
If you leave it open, you would be starting the next discussion with any additional public comment.
Right. So we would, so we would open the public hearing, start the list and then motion to continue public hearing to July twenty-fourth?
And, and again, while, while we're looking that up, is, is there, there is any, is there any of this business has to be done by August first? There's none of it has to be done.
No.
And then when, when would, I, I understand that it's being continued and it remains open, but when would we discuss it? Would it just become another G item?
Yeah.
It would become another G item following, if you wanted to follow the existing rule on the ten fifteen PM, it would be your first item on the July twenty-fourth public hearing.
Thank you.
Clerk?
You all have parsed it out. I mean, you, it's based on what it says here. I'm sorry. You would open and start the hearing and then these people could speak and then that would be it. The item would just automatically be continued and be G one on the next meeting based on the wording of the rule.
So motion, you wouldn't need to motion to continue the public hearing. You just wouldn't close it?
Yeah. The only motion you would need to suspend the rules for is if you don't want to keep the public hearing open and continue it. If you want to finish the item tonight, then you have to suspend the rules. Otherwise, I do my little introduction. The people that are here to speak can speak and then the meeting and then it's continued.
If there's a motion to continue that is supported by the city council.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend the rules to start the item.
In a second.
And a second. Any further questions?
All in favor? Oh, never mind. I forgot the rules. Thank you. Just starting that little thing. Cause it caught me. Go ahead.
I don't know what you're talking about. All right.
I was going to make a motion to I have to wait until we vote on this one.
Yeah, and we're still going to allow clerk Giesler to provide the introduction. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
This is to not start it to go full.
This is to start the public hearing, but there has been an indication that there's interest in being able to open the public hearing. So those who are waiting to speak.
The night is aye.
Okay. All right. So motion carries. So we are moving on to item G eight and we have clerk Giesler here to introduce the item and she'll remind us the exact language that we're looking at based on the change considered earlier in the meeting.
Yes, I, um, and I did send that around to you all and, um, just some brief upfront comments that I'm just going to step up here to move away from whatever is going on with my mic over there. To start, uh, and mayor, council members, uh, and, uh, council president, to start the requested last minute change tonight, which if you're looking up on the screen here is to remove, uh, the words limiting the number of cannabis businesses to one per every twelve thousand five hundred residents, comma, eight. So we would eliminate that. And it would just say approving a proposed ordinance prohibiting the operation of any new cannabis businesses within the city before January one, twenty twenty-five. And then number two would say the same. The purpose of this last minute request, uh, tonight was intended to keep this action straightforward, um, as it was originally meant to be. Uh, the purpose of the revised ordinance proposed in front of you then, as I just read it, uh, is to exercise the temporary prohibition on any new marijuana businesses until January one, twenty twenty-five as specifically prescribed, uh, in the local control section of the new state law. Uh, this temporary prohibition functionally preserves the space and time necessary, we feel, to collaboratively construct a thoughtful and robust ordinance. This future ordinance will outline the registration process, which is our part. Uh, the compliance mechanisms that are required and myriad other complexities of implementing this comprehensive change uh, to state law and by association changed to the municipal ordinance, uh, related to this recreational adult cannabis use. The new law requires that this temporary pro, pro, prohibition uh, be adopted by ordinance, hold a public hearing and must end or expire no later than January one, twenty twenty-five. Additionally, uh, I think it's important to note that we have no role to play and cannot exercise any of the prescribed local control at all until the state stands up its Office of Cannabis Management. That, that projected official stand-up date is January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, January one, twenty twenty-five. The local control section also includes, uh, language codifying the state's commitment to providing assistance to cities uh, through collaboration or collaborative development of forms, processes, ordinance language, um, all through this new Office of Cannabis Management. It is likely that that assistance will, uh, come before the official stand-up of the OCM. They already have an active website that has a lot of uh, great information and links to various other important uh, details for any question you can think of. And as well as the critical guidance and interpretation surely to come from the League of Minnesota Cities. And they, they're already out of the gate on that. Passing this ordinance gives us the time to utilize all of these resources and come up with something collaborative and thoughtful. Like recommend that the council consider tonight what is in front of them and resist the urge to start picking apart all of the potential complexities. We will bring forward more organized discussions in the coming months. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions along those lines.
After the public hearing?
What's that?
After the public hearing.
Of course.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing and I know I have several people signed up. Thank you so much for waiting. Uh, we have Ray Parker first. And then those who are joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. And Ms. Parker, would you, uh, say your name? You have five minutes and there's the little stoplight right there.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council and Council President. My name is Ray Parker and I'm here to, um, just kind of emphasize the things that go on when we have these dispensaries in place. We have several states that have had things that going on for years. And many of them are regretful in opening these. So just to highlight some of the issues, aside from product contamination, like mold and yeast and other contaminants that provide health issue problems. We also have, um, people who have been shut down because they just didn't pay their taxes. Probably have many things in place for things to happen in that way, but some of the drawbacks of legalizing marijuana would be memory issues, especially short-term memory issues, cognitive problems with, uh, problems in thinking abilities and lung damage. And according to Pub Med Central, um, they've also had, there's, uh, addictions, mental illness, violence, crime, traffic deaths with, uh, a lot more people, uh, having drug issues happening with, um, fatal, uh, accidents. There's many health and social problems, schizophrenia and psychosis. They really call for the need for more officers or National Guard. There's evidence of black markets that really do not stop with the legalization and, uh, providing the dispensaries. There's, uh, Mexican drug cartels that come in and they bring in other drugs like heroin. There's higher rates of traffic fatalities, as I've said, and driving under the influence of marijuana. There's increase in marijuana-related poisonings and hospital visits for children occurring. There's no reduction of crimes or increase in tax revenues in the areas of legalized marijuana. We see use of, you know, by children under age seventeen is rising faster than the national average. So let me skip through those. According to the September twelfth, twenty eighteen, which is a few years ago now, the Colorado report compiled by the Rocky and Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas said the drug driving went from killing roughly one person every six point five days to now killing hurts Pearson's every two point five days. That's a lot of increase. And that's just be it through traffic accidents that happen while people are using. The, uh, marijuana can trigger a psychotic episode in forty percent of the people with no family history of psychosis. And according to the Journal of Addiction Research and Therapy, they say quoting, according to research studies, marijuana use causes aggressive behavior, causes or exacerbates psychosis and produces paranoias. These effects have been illustrated through case studies of highly publicized incidents. Marijuana is currently a growing risk to the public of the U.S. following expanding public opinion that marijuana provides little risk to health. So significant increase in accessibility of marijuana. So significant increase in accessibility of marijuana results in more use will lead to increased health risks in all demographic categories across this, across the country. Violence is well publicized prominent risk from the more potent current marijuana available. So checking Colorado's K through twelve uses increased by forty five percent. Increased high school drug violations by seventy one percent. And marijuana is the number one substance found in suicides of young people in Colorado aged ten to nineteen years old. So legalization and implementation of dispensaries for this drug is not a wise choice for those concerned about public health and safety and our schools.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, Representative Andy Smith. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have five minutes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time, City Councilors, and thank you for your continued effort on this. I do appreciate the switch in the ordinance that we've already discussed tonight to not talk about limiting the number of dispensaries. As someone who is Rochester, one of Rochester's representative in the legislature at the time that we passed this legalization bill, I wanted to bring up some of the things that I think this ordinance would potentially harm. I think inadvertently for sure, but something I'm very concerned about and that is the economic development for small businesses and micro businesses in, within the city limits of Rochester. A lot of what we hoped to do with this legislation was not just to legalize this drug, but to also heal a lot of the damage that we had done to communities that used this drug and felt the effects of its criminalization, specifically communities of color, excuse me, communities of color and lower income areas. The hope was that many of the entrepreneurs in that area would be able to come into this newly legal space and be able to start micro businesses to be able to grow their own product that we would be able to make sure was safe and then be able to, to sell it safely and legally in their local areas. And I think limiting as we do in this proposed city ordinance to have no licenses until that last possible date of January first. I think it's going to harm that procedure because it will allow larger industrial and big business interests to have a leg up. Many of these big businesses already have facilities that are growing cannabis, whether indoor and mezzo businesses or in outdoor spaces elsewhere in the state because they took place in our medical cannabis program. And so they will be ready to go to sell this product on January first when those licenses are going to come up. So they will be able to fill up all of those vacancies, no matter how much, how many they are and do so quickly. Whereas local businesses or people who are growing their own product and selling them won't be able to even start growing because of this ordinance until January first. Obviously putting them at a great disadvantage. So while I think this is well intended and obviously we need to give some really strong thought to this. I think we do need to consider those small businesses and allow them the best chance of success. So I want to be orientated towards possible solutions, not just critiquing this possible ordinance. I think we could quickly solve this. Changing the definition of cannabis businesses in this ordinance from the wide ranging definition that it is currently where it covers all kinds of businesses, including manufacturers, mezzo businesses, cultivators, wholesalers, event organizers, and just limit that to those who are selling or retailers. So no licensed retailers will be given until that date, January first twenty twenty five. And other businesses as the State Office of Cannabis Management is coming into being will be able to be granted if that is available. I think that will give some of these smaller businesses a better chance of success and have access to some of the public money that will fund those smaller businesses, especially from disadvantaged communities. So thank you guys so much. I know we'll be talking about this later and I hope to talk to each of you if you have questions and appreciate your time this late at night.
Thank you, Representative Smith. Alright, Elena Nihoff.
Good evening. Mayor Norton and the city city council. My name is Elena Nihoff. I am a wife, a mother and a grandmother. And my concern is about the safety first for children and for the members of community. Yes, we would like to have the business opportunity, but we can make it clean. Business opportunity. This one is questionable. So I have, I prepared my speech. Thank you. So I speak in opposition of recreating marijuana dispensaries being placed here in Rochester. My argument is adverse effect on pregnant women specifically and children. And I have the data. I have the data. I'm gonna speak about two scientific studies. One is published in Frontiers in Pediatrics. The second scientific study was done by University Utah. And I would like to speak of the recommendations from American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists. So the scientific study which was published at the Frontiers in Pediatrics found significant decrease in the weight of the newborn born to women who used marijuana during the first trimester of pregnancy. Research also found significant deficiency, significant deficit in the head circumference of the inborn of the infants. The children born to the mothers who used marijuana found to have several neurological issues. Low birth weight has been associated with obesity in the later, in adolescence and adulthood. It doesn't come right away and comes later. It also gives the childhood hypertension risk. Depression and other social dysfunctions. The study which have been done by University Utah discovered that using marijuana in early during the pregnancy was associated with adverse pregnancy outcomes related to plant center. Like stillbirth, poor fetal growth and great risk of development for high blood pressure during the pregnancies. American College of Obstetricians and Gynecology recommends that women who are pregnant plan or plan to get pregnant or are breastfeeding avoid using of marijuana. You, women who use marijuana during the pregnancy also risk permanent injury to lungs. They develop dizziness and impaired judgment. They may also experience breathing problem due to oxygen, low oxygen level. If that is not enough, if that is not enough, listen more. The study which published in Frontiers in Pediatrics pointed, pointed out that marijuana is the most popular illicit drug in United States. And the most prevalent among users between age eighteen to twenty five. It's also highlights the pitfalls of the legalizing it. So the state which legalized that, they paid the price. The people paid the price. The study found that many dispensaries have recommended marijuana to pregnant women to ease symptoms of pregnancies, especially morning sickness.
It's time to wrap up. Ms. Nihoff.
I ask you, yes, I understand. I ask you to secure the future for our children and vote no on marijuana dispensaries in Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Karen Sharon.
Hello. My name is Karen Sharon. I live in Northwest Rochester. I'm a mother of four. My background is in nursing. Adult use cannabis legislation is reckless and it should not be established in our community. Under three forty two, section seventeen regarding license application. One type of applicant that may be considered has previously been convicted of an offense involving the possession or sale of cannabis or marijuana prior to May first twenty twenty three. So someone used to be called a criminal, but now suddenly they could potentially be a legal cannabis seller. That makes no sense to me. Just because some bureaucrats change the language and try to normalize this drug doesn't change the reality of the substance and how it negatively affects your health. It is evident that the hazards are still known by the fact that we have Article Six regarding the section on education, which says that middle schoolers have to be given information on cannabis abuse, which includes the hazards of mixing it with fentanyl. Furthermore, under Article Four regarding criminal penalties, it's still considered a crime to operate a motor vehicle under the influence of cannabis. If it is already known that cannabis is still dangerous and has the potential to come into contact with our kids, then why in the world is it legalized and being proposed for our community? You are fooling yourselves if you think that you can adequately create a cannabis policy that will safely control cannabis in the public sector outside of medical facilities. Our society already has problems keeping drugs out of the hands of our kids and now cannabis will exacerbate that problem. Mark my words, if you carry out this terrible legislation, we will see severe problems. Besides personal stories of tragedy, there is a ton of data that shows the negative impacts of legalization. Here are a few examples. According to the Colorado Division of Criminal Justice in twenty twenty, one in four traffic fatalities involve marijuana. They also reported that the number of DUI citations for marijuana in combination with alcohol or other drugs increased dramatically in twenty fourteen from five point seven percent to twenty two point seven percent in twenty twenty. The Colorado Department of Public Safety said that calls to poison control for incidences related to marijuana increased by five hundred and eighty six percent for children ages zero to five. The NIH also says that there are significant risks associated with being pregnant using cannabis and that cannabis can cause mental illness. Lastly, on a practical note, what is the price take for all of the monitoring and inspecting that would be required for potential cannabis businesses? Additionally, a cannabis policy seems to violate our own city's vision, which says is committed to health and wellness. Well, according to the data that I just presented, it only shows negative impacts on health. In conclusion, just because something is legal, doesn't mean it is ethical. If you dismiss my warning, I hope that you're prepared for the avalanche of consequences that will come because you allow drugs into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Casey McGregor.
I'm gonna hold off till next time.
Okay. Well, I just wanna, I mean, you don't have a motion to continue, so I don't know that you know that for sure. I was just going to offer, is there a motion to continue?
Yes. I moved to continue until, what was the date that you said, please?
Twenty fourth.
To July twenty fourth.
Right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, any discussion?
No.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, we're continuing because we expect other people, we're just doing it because we're so late that we think other people would be here. Cause there's, there's nobody signed up that told us they couldn't. Just make sure I understand.
It's your decision.
Okay.
I think this is, also requires very thoughtful consideration and it's pretty late at night and we still have several other items and this is not urgent. So I, I feel like there's some flexibility. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I, I kinda go on, I think Mr. Keen is basically saying if this is the people who are here and if, if, if Ms. McGregor wants to speak, let her speak and then let's, let's get this, I mean, it's procedure. And I, and I'm sorry for the people who have spoken already, I mean, we have, our hands are tied and, and, you know, we have to do what we have to do. So I think the motion is gonna be pretty simple and the result will be pretty simple. So I think we continue the, the public hearing and then close it and make our decision. So I won't vote for the continuation.
Remember Kirkpatrick, how many people were on the list to speak tonight? Only Ms. McGregor is left.
Okay, so if we continue it, we wouldn't be continuing the the public portion, which would be.
If the, if the motion passes, if it doesn't pass, then you could make another motion. Right. Or I could close the public hearing.
If you did, I'd like to have.
Yeah, yeah, I would. For that. Councilmember Dennis.
Hey, thank you. So I've talked to people who didn't want to come because they saw it so far down the list on our agenda. And if you follow council meetings and you knew what some of these big items were about, you would be saying, yeah, it's about, gonna be about midnight when I am able to speak on this issue. So I think we would get more people because if we can put this up in the agenda packet, one of the first hearings, public hearings and, and I just agreed that it's not a rush, there's no rush. We wanna do good government. We have other things on our agenda. We have another entire meeting after this, I believe. Is that correct?
Of a brief executive session.
Also another meeting, so yeah, so we have, we're going, we're gonna be past midnight on other issues that need brain power. So I would just, I think it's, I mean, we want good government.
Alright, let's just vote so we can make a decision. So there's a motion in the second to continue to July twenty fourth. Right, it was seconded. Right, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. So G eight is continued to July twenty fourth. That is it for our public hearings for this evening. We're moving on to reports and recommendations, just this one small item here. Mr. Parrish, would you walk us through calling a special election regarding the extension of a local sales and use tax to finance various local capital improvement projects?
Alright, Mayor, President, Members of the Council, really appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight. You've been well acquainted with the sales tax, so I won't do a deep dive on the history, but we're fortunate now to have the opportunity with the legislative approval for the council then to now consider their approval of the legislation as well as advancing the ballot question to the voters in November. So just by way of reference. We really have two actions in front of you this evening. One is just again to adopt a resolution that authorizes the city of Rochester to extend the sales tax and of one half of one percent, which is basically acknowledging the, the state approval. The second is to approve the ballot language calling for that special election. And we'll go through that, but really four projects. We have an Economic Vitality Fund, flood control, street reconstruction and a sports and recreation complex are the four core projects. Again, you're kind of in the middle portion here, really appreciate all the work that the council members did and advocating for this. Of course, Heather Cork and our Legislative Affairs and Policy Director also did a great amount of work here. Just wanna kind of chart out a few things as you consider this, this evening. There'll be a few things that would be initiated after your approval, if you are so inclined to do that tonight. First, we would continue to provide definition to these projects and really provide the basis for an educational campaign. We've been working, you know, with a team of folks at the city staff level to, to do that. And you'll hear more about that at your July twenty fourth city council study session. In particular, of course, a lot of conversation around the regional sports and recreation complex. At that time, you'll hear the recommendation and results of the community working group which have, has a concept plan. And again, it really is that, it's a concept. As we go through the process and even subsequent to the vote, you know, there'd be more definitive design that happens with that. Site considerations and so on. Site considerations and so on. But you also see some preliminary operating models based on the information that you'll see at the July twenty-fourth council presentation as well. That could feature an operating model that's more traditional and run as a city facility, but also could feature a public-private partnership. And really, it's designed to be a combination of something that benefits not only the region, but also the community. And so I think it's, you know, working in all spaces. And I won't go into the details of that. You've been provided a summary of where the working group is via email previously, and you'll hear more about that later. I'd also just say forthcoming, if you are so inclined to adopt these two resolutions tonight, we would then have a contingency ask at the July twenty-fourth meeting for the cost of administering the special election. Something that we're engaging conversations with the school district right now because they're also considering a, an election in the fall that we could share in the expenses of and jointly administer, and the clerk's team is taking a point on that. So again, just without, you know, going through point by point, we have the proposed ballot language is included in the appendices of the resolution. Maybe the bigger policy question, you know, at this point, given the way the legislation was written, you have the opportunity to either approve and recommend the ballot for the projects to be voted as a group, which is what we are recommending as a staff and which is what we have done historically in Rochester with all of our previous sales tax authorizations, or you could have them voted individually. And so that's another option. Not an option we're recommending. We do think that the collective impact, you know, of the whole package, the interrelationships are important, you know, for you all to consider. So without that, I think there's a well-written staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on these two actions this evening.
All right, are there questions? Or a motion?
Oh, my question.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. How much does a special election cost?
So Mayor President, members of council, again, we're still, that's part of the reason the request isn't here tonight is we're still getting some additional information, but I mean, just to put out a loose number, I think it's a couple hundred, about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand is kind of our working estimate right now, but we're trying to refine that. We went projectile polling locations. It's a good opportunity actually to get our election judge some more experience and opportunities to serve. But it is standing up, you know, a fairly significant effort there too.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I'll make a motion then. Adopting a resolution approving Minnesota laws, two thousand and twenty-three, chapters sixty-four, article ten, section six through nine, authorizing the city of Rochester extend the sales tax in use tax of one half of one percent. Adopt a resolution proving ballot language and calling a special election submit to electors the question of whether to extend a local sales tax in use tax on items that are taxable by the state to finance the following economic vitality fund, street reconstruction, flood control, water quality projects excluding the removal of Minnesota zero zero five one five dam in sports and recreation in a sports and recreation complex.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer.
I'm, do we need to make a motion for, to vote for all four at the same time?
That's embedded with the current requested resolution.
Perfect. I have nothing else. I think we've looked at this. I'm excited. I think we have to remember too that coming here, election starts September fifteenth. It starts November seventh and forty-five days before that, right, for absentee ballots?
Correct. I'm not sure that's the exact date, but it's forty-six days. We'll have all of them. We will follow all of the normal timelines as we would for any other election. So forty-six days prior, we'll have seven day prior direct balloting. We'll be working with the county. Everyone will be working in their normally prescribed roles. We're just working out what that's gonna look like and what the cost is gonna be. So.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Norton.
Yeah, so I have a few things to say, and it will not come as a surprise to the staff. Some of the staff, so many, they talk to each other, maybe all the staff. But it may come as a surprise to some of the members here because I didn't see this written form until we all did when the packet came out. And I was a little surprised. I made it clear early on that I had some fundamental issues with the way the lost local option sales tax issue was handled from the start. Some of which we've talked about already here, which was the first being that the legislature's methodology of flip-flopping things from the way it used to be done was a problem. I don't think it is right or fair for the legislature to pre-select and approve what's going before the voters before we have time to do the, make the decisions and have the vote here. I think the way that we used to do it made more sense. We often did a public process in the past where we went to the city, the city council, worked with the community and with members to determine what are the things that are super important to this community that we feel should be put in a local option sales tax. Jerry Williams, former superintendent chaired one of those meetings that took many months and involved many people. And I think led ultimately to something that was supportable, and it was a list of, I think, twenty-four items rather than what is now our limit between three and five from legislature. So I have issues with that to start with. I had also had issues with the whole idea of selecting an amount before we even knew what a project was, and in particular, that amount had to do with the athletic facility, selecting an amount in advance before we knew what it was, who it was for, where it was going to be, who would operate it. We magically pulled a number out of our hat and went to the legislature with that amount. And now we are building backwards to say we have sixty-five million because that's what the legislature said we have, and now build us a product that will fit within that, which I personally find problematic. I think it should have been done. And after the first year, when it didn't get passed, I was a little, tried to be a little generous that first time, even though I had some issues because the administrator was new. There was pressure to get this done so that we had another year if it didn't, if it failed. And that was part of the rationale why we moved ahead quickly is because we wanted to give ourselves that extra year in case it failed. And in fact, it didn't fail. It just didn't go anywhere in the legislature. So I was, I was trying to be more patient and forgiving with the process then, but I did have process the next year when we waited the full year, did no public process to find out what would this sports facility look like, who was it for? We didn't do the work in between those two years. We just waited and brought the same thing forward. We had a lack of, as I mentioned, community engagement, which concerned me. And as I see it, we have four items, three of which are needs, which is the flood control, the roads, and what was housing. We've changed it to economic vitality partly to meet the concerns and needs of the legislature, who wasn't sure housing should be allowed, and I'm hoping we can still couch that well enough to get the housing out of the term economic vitality. And then we have a want, which is a sports complex. And my, my hope, and I explained this to the administration prior to the end of session and hopes that some language or some, I had several suggestions of ways this might be changed, none of which were of interest apparently. But I had suggested that perhaps either the question be allowed to be rewritten or the amount for the sports complex could be changed or some combination thereof. My hope had been that we could break this up into wants and needs, and that the community could be allowed to vote on three items. And I didn't find out literally until today that apparently that was not the case. But I have heard since that apparently an attorney has ruled that it has to be four or one, which again disappoints me, but that's where we're at. I personally wanna give voters the chance to say yes to all the items. I think we have a community, and I, and I know from my work on the school board that the more questions you ask, the harder it is to get things passed, and it's gonna be equally hard because we're going to have a school referendum perhaps at the same time. I do understand that. Where, where I feel frustrated is that I know this community would support housing, and I know this community would support flood control, and I know this community would support roads for the extension of the sales tax. What I don't know is whether the community will support a, support a sports complex that is still undefined for sports that we don't even, we're not a hundred percent sure yet with an operating model that hasn't yet been determined and at a place that hasn't yet been identified. I do not want to lose our three needs for the potential of a want. So my recommendation would have been that we go ahead and ask the community to do three and one. Seeing as how we can't do that, my request is to let the community say yes to each of the four items and trust them to do what's best for Rochester. I just have to say, I'm, this isn't a surprise. I told folks from the very beginning that I was frustrated with the process of how all this was done. And as it went along, I didn't kick up a fuss because I hoped that collaboratively we could work together to come up with something that worked for everyone. That just didn't happen. So I sat back. I allowed it to go through the legislative process. I didn't get in the way of it. I've remained quiet, but when the one thing that I did say is I'd be willing to support this if you can do the three and one or four, you know, the four and let people decide because I trust the people in this community. I was just really surprised that there's, there wasn't even a discussion about it. So we are where we are. You know, you guys will own this, and that's the way it has to be because I, I'm not comfortable with what happened. I'm not comfortable telling the community that you have to vote for all of them, that you can't pick and choose what you think is best for Rochester. So I'll just say I'm disappointed. It makes me, I didn't wanna have to be in this position where I had to say these things publicly. I had hoped that we'd bring forward something that I could say, yep, I can get behind that and work for it, and that didn't happen. And so, you know, here we are where, as I told, you know, the administration, if it comes to me as a single question without any modifications or concern at all for my thoughts throughout this whole process, that I would veto it, which I will. And again, you know, it's a matter of in my mind, even a little bit of respect, but the idea of collaboration and cooperation, that just didn't happen all across the board. And so I guess I'll just leave it at that. For some of you, you don't know, you know, you didn't know where I felt because I stayed pretty quiet about it. But the administration has known all along, and, and we just couldn't come to a place where there was gonna be any sort of discussion or modification or amending, and I offered multiple ideas, concepts, and opportunities along the way, and they just didn't happen. So I'm not comfortable with limping, you know, lumping all that sports complex and with the, the, the things we need in Rochester.
Thank you, Mayor, for sharing your concerns, and it's not a surprise. You've shared your concerns throughout the process, and I appreciate that you bring up some good points, and, and we absolutely need those streets and flood control and housing. So appreciate your consideration and thoughtful choice of words.
Can I just say, I do support the extension of the local option sales tax, and I have said that all along.
I was just gonna say, and I know that you support it.
Thank you.
I was the one that testified for this option on behalf of council at the legislature, so I do support moving ahead, and I'm really hopeful and excited that our community will take this into consideration, these three really needed projects and this one additional really exciting project for our region. So I will just offer Mr. Palmer his turn.
Well, I, I see all four of them as a need in our community, and I think that the city council all along has been involved with this decision and has made the decision to, to move all four along. It's, it's a staff recommendation and, and and the city council has backed the staff on that and has looked at it. We've researched it. We spent money on, on researching for the sports facility. I don't think it's, it's, it, to me, it is for needs in our community, and I think that if you look at our sporting community and our, and our hotel motel on community, that it's a necessary thing to have. So I'm disappointed in the, in the mayor, but that won't be the first time and it won't be the last time.
Even tonight, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, a couple of questions and then a comment. I'm looking at page seven ninety-two, and I'm probably not the right person to do this, but this is the ballot language that's going in front of the voters. How well has this been vetted? Is this just staff saying, let's draft something and here's what it is? Or is, because I've heard that there's little nuances with this, that if you really have, there's, there's a skill to getting the right words and not being too complicated, but like leaning down the right path. Has there been good review of this, or is this just we're in a hurry, we gotta get something out there?
Yeah, but Mayor President, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to respond to that. We worked very closely and collaboratively. Obviously, you know, we had a number of staff review it. But the drafting predominantly was done by Jenny Bolton, our public finance and bonding attorney, just to ensure that we're, you know, appropriately on point. So it does have items within there that are appropriate to the ballot question, but also allows for you to finance some or all of the projects. I would anticipate we would do all of those, but it gives you that flexibility. So it's had a good thoughtful legal review as well.
Okay, that, that sort of explains why the wonky language about the MM Dan, damn number something, because it's part of the legislation.
That is part of the legislation. That's correct.
Yeah, but, but does it have to be in the?
Yes.
Okay, that was one question. The other one, you list twenty-four years, which surprises me because that's less than nine million dollars a year. I thought we had kind of gone over that, never mind the inflation over twenty-four years.
So Mayor President, council, we projected that conservatively because sales tax is somewhat flexible year to year, although our current collections would indicate we would not go the full twenty-four years, but that also gives you some flexibility for financing costs as well. Which would, you know, be in excess of the two hundred and five million dollars that you would potentially collect.
Okay. All right, no, I guess, I, again, I'm trying to, no, I'll just ask. What's the value of being conservative with that? Is that, instead of saying it's got eighteen years, you get some sort of value out of the last six years? What, what do you get out of it? I, I'm not here.
The, the, sort of the value of being conservative is it gives you more opportunity to bond if you feel that's important, but it also protects you in environments where there's a sales tax policy change. And let's say, you know, there's out of state, you know, certain things, goods and services are no longer eligible for sales tax, and your receipts go down. There's a downturn in the economy. It just gives you a little bit more flexibility, but I would project that we would decertify or consider another extension prior to the twenty-four years, but it just gives you some buffer in the event of those kinds of either policy or economics.
So there's, I mean, the first thing that comes up is gonna end the sales tax, whether you collected two hundred and five million or you get to twenty-four years. Is that how it works?
So if you collect the principal amount of two hundred and five million plus financing costs, you are then in a position to either extend or decertify the tax.
Okay.
Or twenty-four years.
Okay, that helps that I understand it a little better. Then, then my comment just again, I, I have been in touch with the mayor about some of these things, and it's unfortunate, but it's also understandable that between seven of us and the mayor and staff, it's hard to get everybody to be agreeing on everything. So I, I don't know the right way to do these. We tried to edit a seventy-page document on the fly today. It's, it's just the nature of some of the way we do things, and it is messy, and I feel bad that it happens that way.
Member Dennis.
Thank you. So yeah, it's getting right near midnight here, so I know this is a huge issue that we want to. But I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Would it be possible to vote individually for each of the, as each of the priorities as Mayor?
Yes, it would.
Wow, yeah. Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea. And then is it possible to change, like if, did we give the legislature the exact, well, we didn't give them the exact plans of the sports complex, but if we decided to, let's say, go back to the drawing board and let the community decide, say, hey, we really want more public engagement on the sports complex. Can, can you give ideas of, do, you know, because I know things like at the open comment, we had people talk, and then I believe strongly that we want more things affordable, so maybe seeing if we can actually really empower the community and have them design or put a lot of input into the design and use of that. So is it, would that be possible to do that and then change the wording of the ballot to reflect it?
It's not possible to change the wording of the ballot. You know, the legislation contemplates a regional sports and recreation complex at six, sixty-five million dollars. There's an active program, you know, that we have right now that's getting a lot of engagement around, you know, what people want. There was a needs assessment. There's an active program, you know, that we have right now that's getting a lot of engagement around, you know, what people want. There was a needs assessment. There's an operational study that you'll be seeing at your July twenty-fourth meeting. But ultimately, the city council will approve the final design and plans and bidding for that project. And so, you know, you ultimately have to be comfortable with the level of engagement that's happened around it. But I think right now, between the surveying, the different kind of design efforts that we've had, we've been given a number of opportunities to provide feedback right now. And we will project that to continue through the design process.
Councilmember Bransford.
Yeah, it's sort of a brass tacks question. So if this were to be broken into four different questions, would you have to repeat that paragraph four times, changing the overall number? So right now it adds up to two hundred and five million. Each one fifty fifty, forty, sixty-five adds up to two hundred and five million. So if you were to break it into four separate questions, how does that affect the language? Is there, are there four different paragraphs? I mean, I I don't want to confuse voters, but at the same time, I mean, I I kind of understand where the mayor is coming from, but I also don't want to make the ballot so confusing that people don't understand.
Yeah, if you, the council is so inclined to want to go to four individual questions, I think there's some strong rationalization not to do that. But if you're so inclined to do that, we would just request that you continue it to a subsequent meeting and we would bring back a revised resolution so you could see it in total. It would read quite differently. To your point, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not asking that we do that. I'm asking, you know, would it have to be like one paragraph, A, yes, no, another paragraph, B, yes, no, something to that effect.
That's correct.
So they'd have to repetitively read the same paragraph with slightly different numbers in it. Okay, thank you.
The numbers will be the same as they're currently assigned, so fifty million dollars for streets, fifty million dollars.
I understand that the the paragraph leading up to the to the four says two hundred and five million.
Yeah.
But if they were individual, it would be fifty fifty.
Understand, understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just add that some of the concern that was raised when the legislature discussed this in committee was that and traditionally cities have always voted these as a package because they get approved as a package. Just like the city of Rochester is that it could confuse voters and had confused voters in another community that was sort of in limbo in twenty twenty that they thought that they were voting for more sales tax than they were. So point five plus point five plus point five plus point five, which is not what they would be voting for. Either way, the sales tax on goods would be the same dollar amount. You just might have less time and be bringing this back. That's the other issue. You would potentially, if one of these passed, you would maybe be doing the same vote again. If you wanted, if you're even allowed to continue the sales tax that's been in place for decades in Rochester. In, let's say, the forty million dollar one is approved and in three years, you'd be considering this up with the legislature again, potentially, and then a vote. And those are some of the factors that you would, the community would be up against, which some people might be very much in favor of. However, the alternative for some of these would be property tax or other other increases, for example, to the stormwater management fee. Mr. Parrish.
Yeah, I just offer up, I mean, the thing, and and there's sort of a projection, I think, you know, that happens with, you know, what's better, you know, an individual question or as a group. And honestly, I do think, you know, collectively you're better. My analogy to this would be if you think about like the state sales tax with the legacy amendment, that's arts and outdoor heritage and, you know, other focus. It brings coalitions of people together that may not be interested in, you know, the things that are disparate. But together, they kind of form and are able to support something as a whole. So I I do think you have the potential to to generate in in a special election year, you know, a broader coalition of people versus, you know, encouraging a bunch of people to vote for their individual item, which has the potential for, I I think the potential for less success, but again, this is, that's political projection. And realistically though, for this environment we're in, it does feel as if you have the opportunity with with a full question or an integrated question that you have the opportunity really to hopefully get all what you want versus some of what you're looking for.
Thanks, Councilmember Palmer, then Dennis.
Well, I I wanted to do the four because I think the only way things are going to pass because I could see people going, well, I already pay for roads. I already have, I don't have flood problems, so I don't care about flood control. Economic development, what does that mean? I already out of the house. And then you're gonna have the sports facility and I think the first sports facility would be the number one pass. The other things will fail and they'll go on to the property tax. The nice thing about a a sales tax is that about forty percent of it's paid for by everybody who shows up. So, you know, you can laugh all you want, Mayor, but but I think, you know, vetoing this is just I I can't even believe it. So never mind.
Councilmember Dennis.
Yes, I see I see both sides of that. I I do feel that we need to have another option and see, you know, like what can be, which wording can be changed? So I would like to make a motion to continue, if it's possible to continue this until the next council meeting. Because I feel we're having a little bit more time to think of that other option would be beneficial.
To what council?
Oh, it's the twenty-fourth, sorry. Continue, continue this to the twenty-fourth with staff bringing back maybe a couple of options of like dividing the
Of two options.
Two options. Well, I mean, you could do the needs and wants or, you know, sometimes.
That's not legal. No, you can only do four or one. That was the challenge that the mayor.
Come back with four because.
Okay, is there a second? No second. All right, any final?
I want to call a question.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick or Paul, any comments?
Can you just remind me what the motion on the table is? There's been a lot of discussions. I want to be very clear.
The.
Resolutions that are in change.
Sorry, I'm late, I'm tired.
Great, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. All right, we have two. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. We have two pulled items. Councilmember Dennis, I know we've got our staff waiting in the wings. See what I did there? Waiting in the wings.
I didn't, I didn't.
You've been working on that one all night, just kidding.
Oh, man.
Watching crash and burn.
Oh, oh, that was not great. All right. Well, thank you for being here. Councilmember Dennis, you've pulled item F four. Contract award around relocation and reconstruction of township roads near Rochester International Airport. Go ahead and share what you pulled. Thank you. Are there a motion and questions directed to the team?
I I do apologize for the lateness and having you stay. And as people know with council Mondays, you're on the phone a lot with different people and so apologize for not being able to get connected with you ahead of time. But my, I brought this forward because when you get big expenditures, and I understand not all are from the property tax. We, it, to have a discussion and we've, the city has put so much, we've voted so many times on supporting the airport, which I I do agree that it's good that we have an airport. But people have had questions about the percentage of ridership, like if it's worth keeping and investing in or in the airport. When a lot of people we talked to will travel up north to the cities. And then the bidding process, I I see that I got an email, which I was just reading now. But if you could describe a little more about the bidding process and how it's advertised and just more for transparency to make sure there's a competitive bidding for expenditures that are over six million dollars. Those are a couple of questions, that's why.
So we have Mr. John Reed here, the executive director of RST.
Good evening, almost good morning, Mayor, City Council President, members of the council. Not really prepared to sit and discuss this evening, the percentage of people who do and don't fly out of Rochester. I can give you a rough number right now. In our MSA, we keep about fifteen percent. The rest make a decision to either drive to Minneapolis, La Crosse, Chicago, Milwaukee. That's the percentages we sit right now. And that's down from thirty percent pre-pandemic. I can come back at a later date and be way more prepared to discuss that particular item if you so choose. I also have Mr. Matt Wagner. He's our engineer from Meeden Hunt. And he can discuss the federal bidding process that we work through in relationship to accepting massive projects that are under the AIP program from the FAA.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council President and Council Members. Yes, the process for bidding a project, we adhere to the League of Minnesota City requirements. So we bid projects, we advertise them online on Quest CDN as well as in the local paper. So those are put out. We had nineteen plan holders for this project, of which four were primary bidders. And we had two bidders go to the pre-construction meeting and we fielded questions from multiple bidders throughout the process. But, you know, the day we opened bids, we had one bidder. So the project did come in below our engineers' estimates. Our estimate was six point five million. It came in at six point three six million. So about two percent below our estimate.
That's really good to hear that there is a competitive bidding. I know that's a huge issue for residents when they want to make sure that they're taxpayer dollars. I mean, oh, and then this is going to be federally funded. Is that correct?
Correct. Ninety percent through the FAA Airport Improvement Program and ten percent through the state of Minnesota.
And then Mayo Clinic chips in some of this or this, I I'm kind of confused about it.
No, these are public projects. Mayo Clinic does not chip in for capital development projects such as runways, taxiways. All that's funded typically through the Federal Aviation Administration. The State of Minnesota Department of Transportation. And then, and in this particular case for this project, we have state bonding to the tune of about eleven point four million dollars.
So I know there's, if if residents really wanted a train, I'm not a train, but a
Okay.
Transit. But between here and the cities, I'm sorry, after midnight, it's hard to.
Councilmember Dennis, this isn't germane to a question about a bid on a runway project.
Well, I'm just, I might quit.
I appreciate.
This is to talk about the need for an airport and so that's.
It's, I appreciate that and I think Mr. Reed is welcoming a further conversation one-on-one. We go through airport financials at the Airport Commission, so they're very well laid out and articulated with ridership and trends and everything that you're interested in. So we're gonna stick to the topic of the runway approval to today. Let's.
Can I get a motion on the on the floor to authorize a contract with Mathewitz Construction, the amount of six point three four million for the reconstruction or relocation and reconstruction of High Forest Township Roads near Rochester Airport?
Councilmember Keen.
Again, good discussion on where, but but again, I did, a lot of this funding, I mean, I appreciate this idea of like the residents want to know, the residents want to know. But watch our library, our our airport funding. This is very little funding from the residents or from the city. And again, I think like the airport board, you would understand better how this works. This is not us paying our taxes and them running an airport with that. That's not what's happening here. Thank you.
And I would just add, we just got another flight from Delta to MSP, which is great news. And this, the, this moment in time is not a great picture of where we're headed for this airport. We are looking to a much brighter future as some of the staffing shortages ease up in the coming year and a half, right? And I was just gonna say, you know, it's not that there aren't valid larger conversations here. I think absolutely that's part of it. But I think those should happen in a different setting at a different time. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I'm just curious if you received these questions in an email today.
I didn't receive an email, but none of the questions other than me knowing that the item had been pulled.
And then I provided it a follow-up email, assuming there might be questions about the bidding process as they have been asked in the past.
Well, thank you for staying this evening to answer those two questions.
I'm here for you all.
Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Palmer, then Mayor North.
Mr. Reed, thank you very much for all you do at the airport. It's great to see that. It's a great asset for the community and I I appreciate your smile this morning and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Mayor.
This morning.
And I was just going to add, many of the issues and questions that have been brought forward were brought forward at the Airport Commission meeting and answered on record. Just wanted to also.
So perhaps a really great way to inform residents is to maybe email them a link with the Airport Commission minutes queuing where it might be on the video if those are recorded so that
We're just.
Yeah, direct to Mr. Reed or to to save. Thank you so much.
Oh, I, one final comment, like this is one, like, this is one component of a very massive project that we have been working on for years and it's really exciting to see yet another milestone being met in this overall implementation of our plan. So.
Yeah, no, thank you. No, this is preparation in all the bidding that goes towards achieving somewhere around twenty, twenty-five million dollars worth of federal funding of which you'll see put into play in actual construction next, next summer.
Thank you. All, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you so
Thank you.
For staying so late. All right, F sixteen, which is now item H three, also pulled by Councilmember Dennis, related to the contract for design of Chateau Theater Heating Ventilation and Air Conditioning or HVAC upgrades. And we have Scott Ramsey, who has also graciously stayed late. So go ahead, Councilmember Dennis, if you have questions of staff.
All right, I do, and just, I wanted to mention that I think when we have really big expenditures or it's good to have discussion and have a transparent and the time that we're right now after midnight. Council does not put the agenda together. And so maybe in the future, the staff could note that if if we want to be efficient.
This is, it's really an opportunity to ask staff questions at this point, not comment on the council process.
Well, I'm I'm making a comment about why I hear a lot of criticism about the lateness of this. And I just wanted to let you know that that staff's, staff made this meeting late.
We have a staff member here ready to answer your questions now.
Okay, well, thank you, city attorney. So they pulled Chateau for several, a couple of reasons, but we have residents who are concerned about expenditures and about just understanding the whole plan. I think there hasn't been the transparency necessarily of how, of what's happening so that the community can see, you know, the overall future. And then just another with the competitive bidding. I just wanted to make sure that this price, because I've never paid for HVAC system for a big. So I mean, this seems like a lot and I just wanted to clarify that there was, this is the lowest best bid.
So thank you. Just wanted to start off by saying we always competitively bid our projects in accordance with state law and our local regulations. So that I would turn it over to staff.
Yes, President, Mayor and City Council, we did go to three different firms. And this is a replacement of a HVAC system that's at the end of its useful life. There's five air handling units, two of them have leaks in the coils that would have to be repaired. So we had three firms that we met with. One came over and looked at it, declined to bid it. Another one didn't come and look at it, declined to give a bid. And so the one bid we did get was from Solace O'Brien. It's it's above the ceiling, it's in the mechanic room, it's a high ceiling, it's a complicated project. And I I don't have any other reasons why they didn't decide to bid, but we did go to three different firms.
Couldn't be possible if we only got one bid, then the city doesn't have a choice to go back and get more bids or advertise for more.
I just think it's important to clarify that this is not a construction project. This is a professional service to design a future construction process, a project. So typically, we would go to the qualified contractors that provide this type of professional service that we are aware of, do this type of work. And also, this, I believe, falls within what was estimated within the capital improvement plan that was approved by the city council, I believe, in twenty twenty two for the twenty twenty-three budget.
That's correct.
I just, I think the advertising of it, that we did a bidding process when we only
We followed the request for proposals process.
Only had one bid, so that it wasn't like the city proposal. I'm sorry, one proposal. So I think it would be beneficial to seek more in the future.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Right, Councilmember Palmer. Right, just, Mr. Ramsey, I do feel like this could have been answered in an email last. Right, just, Mr. Ramsey, I do feel like this could have been answered in an email last Thursday, after we got the agenda packet on Wednesday. Or Thursday, Wednesday, just sorry you had to stay so late when you explained this in an email earlier today. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I just, thank you, I want to say thank you too, thank you. I want to say thank you too, also, Mr. Ramsey, you did answer that, and perhaps if I would have forwarded my email to Ms. Dennis, we, we might have had that, but I appreciate.
Provided to the entire council.
That's right. And I appreciate the considerate use of the CIP funds to kind of keep this structure going with regards to perhaps changes in long-term use, so, thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, so we are moving on to a couple ordinance second readings, and we have Mr. Spindler Craig here to walk us through these, they do each require a vote, so go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Item K one is an ordinance rezoning approximately seventy-four total acres of land from BP Business Park to R two low-density small lot and R three medium-density residential, and amending ordinance number four four seven eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, moving on.
Item K two, an ordinance creating sections five dash fifteen dash thirteen through five dash fifteen dash seventeen, amending paragraph B of section five dash fifteen dash four, amending sections five dash fifteen dash two, five dash fifteen dash eight, five dash fifteen dash nine, five dash fifteen dash ten, five dash fifteen dash twelve, and amending the title and section of five dash fifteen dash eleven of chapter five dash fifteen of Title Five of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to the regulation of massage therapists and massage therapy businesses.
Move approval, second.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I have a question. Since this is going for our final approval, doesn't the massage ordinance cover anyone in the city who has a license? Is that the intention of this?
Yes, any, any, any businesses that have a massage license.
So whether it's therapeutic massage or Asian massage or any, the, the ordinance covers all massage businesses with a license, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, then can you possibly explain why communication regarding licensure changes the ordinance, training about the inspection or other meetings that include both individual licenses and massage business licenses? Why communication isn't, doesn't go out to all of those businesses and instead only a select few?
Maybe Clerk Geisler would be.
Please.
Better hand up, yeah.
Hi, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, so there's a complexity that's involved when you have massage therapists that have to have a license, but then work for businesses that are licensed or managed in other ways. Like if they work at a healthcare facility, or if they work at a chiropractor, or they work for somebody who's held to some sort of regulatory standard that's above and beyond. So what our regulatory structure is meant to do is to capture everybody that's not caught up through other processes, through either medical facilities or something else that's licensed by the state. So what we're capturing is people that don't have to be regulated under those things, which are individual proprietors and people that own like independent massage businesses and aren't part of another type of business that's regulated at the state level. So there's some separation there. That's why we wouldn't necessarily communicate with every massage business. Or because if it's tucked inside of another business that's regulated by a different entity, we don't have a need to have communication with them necessarily. Does that make any sense?
That makes a lot of sense. However, I understand that perhaps what you just said hasn't been followed. And that's a concern I have about perhaps the establishment of this ordinance.
I, I, I'm a little, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking or what the concern is, if you wouldn't mind just clarifying for me a little bit.
I understand that certain communications about licensure have not been received by all massage businesses that hold licensure. There hasn't been an across-the-board communication, not, not speaking specifically to perhaps the, the massage therapist that are, that are at the DALK, for instance, or, or massage therapists that also do acupuncture, that might be RNs that fall under perhaps a different category.
Sure.
I am just aware that there has not been consistent communication to all of those folks that would fall under the description of licensure that you just suggested. And I'm trying to clarify, if indeed that's the case, that it should be happening. And I think what I've gotten confirmed is that, yes, that should be happening. So now, I guess the onus is on me to go back and perhaps discover why these communications haven't happened, if indeed that's the case.
I think if I'm parsing out what you're seeing here, you might, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're referring to sole proprietorship, which are somebody that is an individual massage therapist who only works for themselves.
Versus maybe an LLC or something else.
Works in their home, and that is a different. That's a different mechanism.
Okay.
And what's adopted in this ordinance, largely and almost completely, I mean, I would have to think to come up with a hypothetical where this isn't true. And we don't want to do that, but I think right now, I can't think of one.
Right.
Where the, this is really specifically intended for massage businesses that have a business location. So communications did not go out to those individual proprietors, because nothing about these changes affects them. They're going to be carrying on in the same fashion as they were before, as is prescribed for their specific type of business, which is they are sole proprietor, they have a license, they have a business, they have no employees. They're not required to carry any kind of workers' compensation, and they're working out of their home, which is a different standard.
Okay.
So, okay, it's just different.
All right, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that.
In reading the ordinance, for me, there's a ton of exceptions who doesn't need a license. And I think that's confusing if you haven't read the ordinance, but there's almost ten items that you don't need to have a license for. Some people are licensed, usually thought they needed to be, they don't need to be, so just my clarification on that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Any other questions? All right, thanks Clerk Geisler.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries, Councilmember Palmer voting nay. All right, that is it for ordinance readings. Other business, I had one super, super fast item, and then Councilmember Dennis does. I just wanted to say, I went to the Economic Development Association of Minnesota Conference, and there was a really good presentation. I forwarded some information to our staff on development incentives and how you think through some of those questions around setting the right level of development incentives. And I know our staff are really wonderful at that, but if anybody wants that presentation, that was one that I thought might be interesting. All right, Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you, and thank you for doing that. So I just have a couple clarifications and then a couple of questions. The one clarification, I just wanted to point out that residents cannot see our emails. And so bringing these up for discussion is transparency, and transparency is trust. So one of the reasons I think it's important to pull items to be in very educated and informed policymaker. And then I wanted to touch on July being Disability Pride Month, I think that's wonderful. And just also clarify that disabilities come in all shapes and sizes. And physically, there's neurological, a lot of different disabilities. So I'm excited that we can celebrate all ability levels. And then what the reason we have other business is to really make sure that address, we address issues that are brought up in other, or in open comment. And there was a couple of issues that I wanted to, just to get answers for those residents. But before I ask those two questions, there, the lady who came in and was quite distraught, I felt she was confused and confused by the process. And I feel like that, and I don't know her, but I feel that maybe we could do better at explaining processes in different ways, so that people who are passionate, as she was, may not have that situation that she experienced, being taken out, escorted by the police. I just feel that she didn't understand, which it's hard to understand, this complex city hall, the world, so that's my, my thought. And then my two questions are, they're not my questions, the questions that were brought up by the, by the residents. First, the transit, the gentleman who came and Mr. Busby, Busby, he came, who is a spokesperson for the transit, had emailed us about the lack of bathrooms earlier on, and then today talked about the driver safety issue. And I just wanted to see what is being done about that from the city's perspective, thank you.
The bathroom situation was addressed on the same day and communicated to Mr. Busby, so that has been corrected and was provided a week ago. I guess it was five days ago. The concern that was raised in email was sent to the City Attorney's Office, and I think there, that was what was probably addressed on the hallway, is that some of what was relayed is not necessarily my understanding of what the charging process would be, but I would leave it to Michael Spindler Craig to share further, he would choose to do so.
Yes, just very briefly, I did speak with Mr. Busby, just talked through perhaps some misunderstandings of jurisdiction on charging decisions. Helped him understand that, to the extent that he was concerned about enhancement to a more serious charge, that would either initially be a decision by the officer involved in responding to the scene, but ultimately, a more serious charge would be a consideration of the Olmsted County Attorney's Office. So just in part wanted him to make, to better understand charging considerations and jurisdiction. And he seemed to gain some insight from that conversation. And certainly expressed to him, of course, the concern with any, any driver who ends up in situations like that feels personally threatened. That situation did result in a charge that will be prosecuted by my office. And as we typically would, we'll reach out to that driver as a victim of that particular offense and offer resources and access to the justice system.
Thank you. Safety is a priority of city government, so thank, thank you for the answer to that. And then the resident who had some frustrations with getting answers back when she did a data poll. And so I'm not going to use exactly what the process was, but she stated that she was trying to get the records of the cellphone, cellphone data, which is public knowledge of, I'm not sure if it, council members, but definitely of city staff. And how can a resident do that more efficiently, gets information that is obviously, anything during the council meeting is public record. I mean, if we're texting, a, a resident should be able to see exactly who we're texting and what we're emailing and all that efficiently, so, thank you.
And I'm not sure how to, how to respond to that. There were probably five misstatements of, of the law or facts in, in that, in that comment and question. We have, we have professional.
Clarify, because that's what my understanding is, so.
We have professional staff that deal with data practices requests, regardless of where they come from, who they come from, what the motive is, who's encouraging those data requests, it doesn't matter. We deal with them according to the law, and we respond to a data request. And not going to go into details about that individual data request and what the response was, other than to say we follow the law with data requests.
Well, okay, well, the, um, thank you, I guess, I, I don't, I don't know what else to say, because I feel that, just that we want to make sure it's efficient and easy for people to get transparency with the government, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I'm just a little confused, because earlier you said you didn't want efficient government, and that things could take a long time. But now you're saying the government should be efficient, so that confuses me a little bit. But you don't have to comment it on it if you don't want.
If you're asking that question, efficiency.
I, I didn't ask a question, I said I was confused, I made a statement.
Okay, so.
Need to respond.
I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn, and I will just pause and ask Mr. Spindler Craig to make sure that we're clear on the process of adjourning to an executive session.
I just wanted to say one more thing.
No.
I, I share a lot of my emails with constituents, it's part of the constituency work that I do to keep them informed. And I do know that one of the emails that I had, that I had responded to a constituent was placed on social media, and hundreds of people saw it. It's a really great way to inform the public, so you could take some of those answers that you might hear in emails or receive in emails and share them that way as well to inform the public. I just think it's another platform that we have to use to be transparent and accountable for the work that we do here. That's all.
That's a good idea.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, consistent with the posted notice, I would suggest a motion to adjourn to City Hall Room one oh four for an executive closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three to discuss the purchase price of property located at Morris Memorial Subdivision Outlet B, parcel identification number seven four one three three four zero eight three four six five, at a time you believe appropriate.
Move to adjourn with the, with the executive session to follow.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned to the executive session. Let's move on now.